Good evening, everyone. I hereby call the Monday, May 13th, 2024 Cumberland Town Council Meeting to order. A few housekeeping items here. We did have a Finance Committee meeting this evening, right before this meeting at 6:00, where we talked about year-end transfers and a couple other issues. But that brings us now to our 7:00 meeting. The first item on the agenda is the Approval of the Minutes. That's our April 29th, 2024 meeting. Have any questions or a motion on that?
I'd move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Nope. Anything from the public on those minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Manager's Report. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am going to defer to Chief Rumsey, who's here tonight, to introduce some of our newer police officers and swear them in tonight before you. Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, councilors, for giving me a few minutes to introduce you to three members of our staff. If I could ask Detective Joe Burke to come on up, please? And Joe, would you take a spot right here in front of the podium? Thank you. So, tonight, we're going to swear Joe Burke into his position as detective. Joe has over eight years of experience with us here at the Cumberland Police. Prior to... One interesting note about Joe, he was hired on Leap Year Day in 2016. So, we're trying to figure out if he gets to work here for 25 years or 100 before he gets to retire. It's an ongoing debate. Trying to keep him in shape, in case he's got to make the long haul. Prior to his coming to us at Cumberland PD, he worked as a Corrections Officer and also served in the US Army as a Forward Observer. He began his new role as detective in early April. In his new role, he's responsible for the investigation of major crimes, the management of our property and evidence function. He serves as liaison with our domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking organizations that we partner with, and several others, but those are just some of the folks that he liaisons with. He serves as our Court Officer, and he assists when needed on patrol. So, we'll swear all three of our folks into their new positions when I've gotten done introducing them all. So, that's just a little bit about the many-layered onion that is Joe. If you don't mind stepping down with Joe. Mike, if you want to come on up? So, introducing to those of you that may not have met, Mike Dark. He's our new Animal Control Officer. He started with us on April 1st. Mike had no ACO experience before coming to us, which made me a little bit nervous because I've actually never trained in ACO either, but I'm happy to report that Mike basically picked it up and ran with it, has been teaching himself, has been building a really good network of other animal control officers, has been to some other communities, spending time with animal control officers, has spent a little time with our former Animal Control Officer Bobby Silkott, who retired and actually opened up the position for Mike. Mike's a little bit of a Renaissance man. He has some really rich life experience as a wildlife photographer. He has had a 25-year career in the hospitality industry, so ask him sometime about all the famous people that he's met, working out west in the hospitality industry. He's worked as a wildlife guide, a zoological docent, and a vet tech. Since he got here, I've really been impressed with the fact that Mike's just very calm, he's very friendly. As I said, he's a self-starter and has been teaching himself how to do the job and has done an excellent job at that so far. So, thank you for being here, Mike. And if you would both step down, I'll ask our new Captain Mindy Ko to come on up and stand in the hot spot in front of the podium. So, you folks might know that we found Mindy after doing a nationwide search for our new Second-in-Command. We started that search after Captain Jake LeChance, who's actually with us, came by to say hi, left us and went to take a position with the Main Chamber of Commerce. Mindy did amazing during the process. She really came out on top of a very strong field of candidates that we brought in to interview and to have... do a public presentation with us, and then put them through the sort of rigmarole or the difficulty of going downstairs and meeting with the entire team that was going to be working with the new captain after we hired them. And Mindy did amazing throughout that entire process. She comes to us with over 17 years, or about 17 years, with the Iowa State Patrol, where she was promoted to Lieutenant in 2020. Iowa State Patrol is an agency of about 370 troopers, so to rise to the level of Lieutenant in an agency that large is quite notable. She served as a military police officer in the Navy for five years before that, and before that was actually a middle-school teacher for two years. And I sometimes think being a police administrator isn't...
Careful.
Oh, okay. I'll stop there. I'll stop there. Mindy has a Master's Degree in Criminal Justice and Executive Certificate in Leadership and Management. She's a graduate of the FBI National Academy, past President of the Iowa Association of Women Police. She serves on the Finance Committee for the International Association of Women Police. And maybe more important than all that, she's a really wonderful human being, and really impressed us all with her sort of kind personality and her desire to come here and be a member of the CPD family. So, very excited to have Mindy onboard as well. So, we're actually going to pin Mindy's badge on, so I'll ask Chief Scott Stewart of the Brunswick Police Department, who is Mindy's significant other, to come up and pin her badge on for her new position as Captain.
Has she had any lobster yet?
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And now, I would ask Clerk Jen Doten to come up and swear all three into their new positions, please.
I'm just going to put that down so it's not hard to hold it.
See, you walk up and I just get out of your way.
You're awesome. This is going to be sweet and simple, and just wait till the end. Do you, Mindy Ko, Joseph Burke... I love that you did that on command. And Michael Dark swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as you shall continue a citizen thereof, and that you will faithfully discharge, to the best of your abilities, the duties incumbent on you as Mindy Ko Captain, Joseph Burke Detective, and Michael Dark, Animal Control Officer, for the Cumberland Police Department, according to the Constitution and laws of the state?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Fantastic. Congratulations. Welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you for a few minutes of your time, councilors. Yeah, thank you, Chief. That was great.
Really? I saw that. What's the position? Is he the chief?
Yeah.
He's the chief.
I'm the chief.
Because I have friends who are... Caleb has friends who are... For their police department. Someone who's ex-military is married to one of his best friends.
Ready to go? Okay. Is that all you had under Manager's Report? Mr. Manager? Okay, perfect.
We're just waiting on you.
Yeah. Well, I was just... Sorry, I was waiting on him to say that's all, Mr. Chair, so... Okay, perfect. So, we will now move to public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under New Business for further council discussion. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to discuss the council on a topic that's not on the agenda? Please, if you don't mind just stepping up and saying your name and where you live.
Come on. Let's come on. This is based off in a past meeting, so if something on the agenda that I'm not aware of, then I apologize. Good evening. I'm here tonight to speak to the council as a steward of the union in support of the administration and their efforts to increase staffing. We need eight people to fully staff a second ambulance. The numbers don't lie. Our staffing cannot handle more than one call at a time, so our second, third calls require to utilize mutual aid. This system works, but leaves surrounding councils without coverage. I know from the council's standpoint, you have to worry about costs, but how does one weigh the value of human life? In early 2021, there was a cardiac call here in town. The department will be presented with an award on the 22nd of this month. This award will be for the actions of the crew that saved the life that day. The crew was two full-timers, three live-in college students, and one call member. Why is this important? On this day, we had a textbook STEMI, a heart attack for those that are wondering what a STEMI is. Patient did not want to go with us, but we assured him it was in his best interests. On the way to the hospital, as we turned on the Bucknum Road, the patient coded at our feet, and the job of saving his life had begun. The crew consisted of two full-timers in the back and a student driving. The student could not drive. The outcome could have been different. The crew simultaneously started CPR and defibrillation. When we exited 295, seven minutes later, we revived him. Seven minutes of CPR is an attorney when doing it alone. Having adequate staffing would allow for more personnel to ensure the best quality CPR possible. If it had been the two on-duty full-timers, this would not have been possible. Saving the life is not about bringing them back, it's about bringing them back to the quality of life they had before. But how does one value human life? On Christmas, a couple years back, we had an 18-month-old rush to the station in a very unhealthy state. The patient was not breathing and barely conscious. The patient needed immediate action to save her life. I can honestly tell you, this is probably one of the hardest calls I've ever been on, as I knew the people involved. In my world, you don't have to be blood to be family. Thankfully, being a holiday, we had call members that would likely have been at their full-time careers on a normal day in town and able to respond. We worked together with the full-time crew to produce an excellent outcome. The crew was three call company members and two full-timers. But how does one value human life? The answer to that question is, there is no cost too high to save the loved one. I know how highly I value my family, and I could not imagine how it would affect me or this community if the outcomes were different. This Saturday was a prime example of how mutual aid is not always perfect. We had a patient that we were transporting to the hospital. We had that patient, we were transporting to the hospital... I apologize, I said that. While committed to this call, there was a second call on Farwell Ave. This was handled by Yarmouth. It's how mutual aid is set up, based on this location. A short time later, we had a third call, also on Farwell Ave. Mutual aid ambulance was assigned. We were still at the hospital. We finished up at the hospital and started back from Portland. We realized we had not heard the third ambulance go en route. We reached radio dispatch and found out they could not get a crew, and we started back from the call from Portland, lights and sirens. Patient care was delayed while due to lack of staffing and travel time from Portland. If we had adequate staffing, the third call would have been handled by Yarmouth, and the first who we would have taken care of ourselves. I stand today to encourage you to think beyond the cost of staffing and think of the cost if we don't do anything. God forbid the outcome is bad. I'm not only a union steward, a captain in the department, but a taxpayer who grew up here. I know the struggles you deal with. How do we choose what is important now, and what are the needs of the future? I can tell you these needs are right now, and I appreciate your time for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate you coming. Is there anyone else from the audience who'd like to address the council on a topic not on the agenda?
I've got a question.
Do you mind just stating your name and where you live?
Kevin Balvin, Longwoods Road.
Thank you.
Question. Are we able to comment after you guys bring up these topics as well?
Absolutely. Yeah, there will be a public comment under each agenda item as well. Good question.
My name's Steve Sloan. I live on Range Road, and now that I've been outed on what I do...
Sorry.
It's okay. I just want to touch on Jason's point. I started with the Cumberland Fire Department in 1996. I was part of the Regional Paramedic Program, which worked well, until each community wasn't getting what they wanted out of it. So, that's when the regional program went away, and then 10 years later, or five years later, the Fire Department took over EMS. During that time, the Fire Department had one per diem, and the EMS had two. When they combined, you lost staffing, because now you only have the two people on the ambulance. Back in 1996, we used to have to almost get into fistfights to see who was going to ride the fire truck, as all volunteers. Over my time, and generally throughout the country, the volunteerism is down, right? We know that. We can't get coaches to coach Little League games, or umpire softball games, or do anything like that, but yet we want people within our community to volunteer for the Fire Department for $20 an hour, to risk their lives for people that they have never met. That takes a special kind of person, number one, and it's difficult to find. I can't tell you how many research the county is doing right now on a study that combines all the departments and their staffing, and it's... They're due to make a presentation at the end of the month. But everywhere is struggling to find volunteers, and how you... The only way you can combat that is by adding full-time staff. Now, I don't expect that the town council is going to say, "Hire 20 people today," right? But we have to look at an incremental approach to get that staffing, so that we know that when we call 911, somebody's coming, right? We know right now, if somebody dropped right here, we have an ambulance. But if this building was on fire, you cannot guarantee that anybody's going to be here. It's that simple. I've been there. When I was working, I went to a fire in West Cumberland, Ronnie, you'll know, and when I got there, on the ambulance, there was no fire truck behind me. It is the worst feeling in the world to be at a building fire that you know how to put out, but you don't have the tools to do it. We have millions of dollars of apparatus sitting in our stations, and they're doing just that, they're sitting, waiting for somebody to come get them and drive them to the call. And a lot of the times, they don't go. I've been on many calls where the ambulance is the only crew that shows up, and we are waiting for a mutual aid fire engine. It is the loneliest place in the world. To speak to Jason's point on being on an EMS call and relying on the engine to come give them a hand, I've been the one in the back. I've been... Also been the patient that Cumberland has had to come take to the hospital. So... And they needed that... Those additional people. So, we need to do our part, and we deserve better for our citizens to make sure that we look at a staffing plan that is... Does it in incremental phases, so that we do have that, so that the people on the ambulance aren't left hanging, that they don't have any help coming to them. That's all I have?
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll just keep on topic with the past two people that have commented. Glad we don't have our timer, so I'm going to mention that again. I've been instructed in the past that people lose my message, and when I get upset, I raise my voice, and I don't have solutions. Well, here's as positive as I can be, and I've made Positive As I Can Be me and a few ideas and solutions. Emergency services staffing has been a problem for years. We've all known about it, we've just ignored it. Now, all of a sudden, it's an emergency. Why? What's changed? What's the emergency? If we want to solve real problems, we need to call things by their real names. By no means am I an expert. I will never claim to be an expert, but I have been involved in public safety industry since I would ride a bike, about that, so run around the firehouse. I've been involved in public safety all across this nation, from sea to shining sea, various levels of leadership, and assisting the public in safety operations with populations in the millions. Again, not claiming to be an expert, but I have stated a few holidaying expresses. So, let's recap the staffing at the Cumberland Emergency Medical Services Department, because that's the majority of Cumberland's emergency response call volume. That's what the target hazard in this community is, its health care. But we also have to be prepared for other life safety hazards, such as motor vehicle accidents, fire alarms, and other things that are indeed on fire. Currently, as I understand it, we have one person... One two-person crew at the paramedic level 24/7. So, like Jason said, like Steve said, you get the first call, you're good to go. Your kid won't die, most likely. We've got one full-time EMT Fire Chief, Monday through Friday on the business hours. We've got one full-time paramedic deputy chief, Tuesday through Friday, business hours. So, that means we can staff two ambulances, Monday through Friday, Tuesday through Friday... Excuse me. Tuesday through Friday, we can staff two ambulances, correct? We also have one full-time admin staff, Monday through Thursday, that's not a 40-hour position and has zero emergency response capabilities, a position that was held for years as a responder. We also have several adult living firefighters, EMTs. They provide sporadic daytime availability and Sunday through Thursday overnight coverages. Remember, these are adults, they're 18-plus. If they're old enough to die in a foreign war, they're old enough to take you to the hospital. They should be used as staffing when applicable. Where's the data? The analysis? Where's the analysis that tells us where our highest call volume is? What days of the week? What times? What types of medical emergencies? Are they primary BLS, Alpha-Bravo responses, or ALS responses, Charlie-Delta echoes? Where the... What area of the town have our second calls been in? What mutual aid partner are we relying on the most? If you're confused by terms, these are response codes that responders... That respond the severity of the call and the recommendation on how they should respond. Alpha on the low end, single ambulance. Echo on the high end, CPR in progress, multiple ambulances, providers. Many agencies respond according to the code in relation to their staffing. Again, alpha, you're going to get an ambulance, maybe an engine in some agencies across this nation. You're not even going to get an ambulance. Without the data, one must assume the following. The Cumberland EMS Department is capable of handling one EMS call 24/7, 365. One call at a time, depending on the length of commitment, depends on the triage, treatment, transport, and the restocking variables of that call for service. Cumberland EMS also has the ability to handle a second medical call up to the paramedic level four days a week during the day, Tuesday through Thursday, business hours, and that would be the EMS admin chiefs. Outside of those two scenarios, we're relying on our live-in students, the community to assist their neighbors, like Steve said, isn't going to happen because we can't even get baseball coaches. A system that's been stretched to the max and never fully replenished with new interest from the community, so where does this leave us? Well, we need a solution for now and a solution for later. Now, real life, the duty crew, 24/7. We also have that EMS admin crew, Tuesday through Thursday. The now proposal, an immediate review of all day-to-day operations and workflows. It has to be done. We've got to figure out. We've got to figure out the data, when, where, and why, right? The duty crew, like I said, they can handle those two calls, Monday through... Tuesday through Thursday, two EMS calls. We can hire a paramedic on a 24-hour shift, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, to cover those second calls, to back them up. So, then we can have two calls ready to go seven days a week. This emergency fix would fill life safety gaps in the service for the intern while a permanent plan can be put in place. The costs are one per diem medic for three 24-hour shifts. Again, this is ballpark numbers, $1,500 a week, $78,000 a year, let's round it up to $100,000. Jason, it's $100,000 the cost of the life in this community, is what I've come up with.
Mr. Balvin, we're over that five minutes. I'd be happy to give you the additional two, if you're getting close to wrapping up.
Yeah, I'm going to keep going. Long-term, we have to have a regional conversation, like Steve said, about emergency services. When a municipality has the size, capital, and supporting call volume, a single jurisdictional based structure works great. However, when smaller, less-equipped municipalities have to meet the needs and services of those same larger agencies with less, we need to regionalize. Jurisdictions like Cumberland EMS should look into examples across this nation of different response and staffing structures for emergency services. Look at the Sheriff's Office, for example. They provide a service to a collective level because even Miss Valleys can't afford or don't want a local police department. A Casco Bay Emergency Service Department, or something along those lines, should be looked at in a long-term study. Will this work next year? No, it's not. That's the long-term plan. I already went over the short-term. I'll end this on this last thought. Regardless of what happens with the government inaction, let it be known, the reason we have positive outcomes from the situations Jason outlined is from the fire, EMS, and police responders themselves. That raise their hands to do the selfless act of protecting all of us, as well as the 911 telecommunications that face that same short-staffed and difficult work environment that we do not see. We just see those guys, and what, guys, gals, guys and gals, or whatever they want to be called. Short-term fixes, figured out, there's no reason why we don't have adequate public safety services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to address the council on a topic that's not on the agenda? And I would encourage the folks who are discussing fire and EMS, later this evening, there is a discussion on that topic, item number 24-046. So, if you want to stick around, you're more than welcome, and we'd welcome your comments there as well. Anyone else from the audience like to address the council on a topic not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and close public discussion, and we will move directly into legislation and policy. The first item on the agenda this evening is to consider and act on a request from the Shabig and Cumberland Land Trust for $100,000 towards the purchase of the Watson Woods property adjacent to the Rhine's Forest. I believe we may have some folks from CCLT here to speak with us this evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm Penny Asherman, resident of Cumberland and Executive Director of the Shabig and Cumberland Land Trust. And this is Rod Vogel, who also resident of Cumberland and President of the Board of the Land Trust. I know you have a packed agenda tonight, so I appreciate this opportunity to talk to you about this project. And I'm going to start with a story. 20 years ago, we were bushwhacking, me, Rob Crawford, several councilors. We're bushwhacking through the woods at Rhine's Forest, trying to decide whether we were going to purchase that property. I think Bill might have been there, too. I had my daughter, who was two years old, in a backpack on my back. We're wandering around the woods, thinking, "This is so beautiful, we have to do this." We got to Mill Brook, and we were all standing there and admiring it, and there was a person on the other side of the brook, and he said, "You're never going to cross the brook. It's not ever going to happen." And so, we said, "Thank you." You know, we went back. We ended up purchasing, the town ended up purchasing the Rhine's Forest that year. We thought, "Maybe someday, we'll have the opportunity to protect the Watson property across the creek." And so, now, I'm here to talk to you about the Watson property, because we have that opportunity. My daughter is 22. She's 23, and she's here tonight, so she was the one who was on my back, and happy to be able to bring this project to you. Since we last talked, I came to the council in February asking for a letter of support for the Land for Meets Future Grant that we were applying for, and we received that letter, thank you very much. We submitted our application in March for $330,000. We meet with the LMF Board tomorrow morning, so this is all very timely, and I would appreciate... It would be wonderful to be able to go to that board meeting tomorrow morning to say that we have support from the town of Cumberland. I'm also wanted... Also wanted to thank Earl Davis, who we've been negotiating with, for her vision and her willingness to protect this property with CCLT. We have worked together on some keys... Really key parcels in the town of Cumberland. The Land Trust and the town have worked together to expand our capacity to protect Rhine's Forest, Knights Pond, Broad Cove, Greeley Woods. All of these places are really... They define our community, and we're really proud to have worked together with you on all of that, and we look forward to working with you tonight on Watson Woods. We've been waiting a long time for this opportunity, at least 20 years. We have a small window to do it. If we don't do it now, it's not going to ever happen. So, I'm going to walk you through some of the details of the project. So, I'm going to start just with some context. The Watson property is the one in red, and you can see that there... It's directly adjacent to Rhine's Forest, also the Reed Family Farm and Woods that the Land Trust protected two years ago, and is also connected to the Sunnyfield Open Space that the town owns, for a contiguous block of 400 acres total. And then, there are several other parcels, as you can see, that are... That are very close to that as well. This is a primary conservation focus area for CCLT and the town of Cumberland, because it's the largest block, forested block of land in Cumberland. And also, this is the largest undeveloped forested parcel left in Cumberland. Watson Woods is also part of a 2,000-acre conservation corridor from Wyndham through Falmouth, through Cumberland, up to Knights Pond, and into North Yarmouth. through Falmouth, through Cumberland, up to Knights Pond, and into North Yarmouth. And that's really exciting, and, and it has happened because the towns and the land trusts have been working together. And so we've been able to put, put the pieces of the puzzle together, as you can see, it looks like a puzzle, and we've worked, we work with each other, you know, we talk monthly, we work on projects where we can be crossing borders and creating not only recreation quarters for people to recreate, but also for wildlife to move and expand their habitat. So this is an astounding accomplishment to have two thousand acres that are, that are all together. It also is, there are five hundred fifty thousand people in greater Portland, and we know that people come from Portland to our, to our properties, so this will be a place that people will come to. We already know Rhine's Forest is a popular place, and adding Watson Woods into it will make it even more so. So, this is the parcel. It is seventy-nine acres, and it's located at the end of Turkey Lane, and, which is off of Route Nine. There will be a public access right-of-way across the field to a small parking area adjacent to the field where the trailhead will begin. And there'll also be public access from Rhine's Forest, from the Reed Family Farm and Woods, and from the unimproved section of the road on Turkey Lane. The landowner is retaining the house and the field and the barn, which is about eighteen acres. Some of the property attributes are, that, there's Mill Brook, there's six thousand feet of frontage on Mill Brook, and it has wild brook trout, which is pretty unusual for our area. It has, the parcel also has lots of wildlife, because it's a large contiguous block of forest. The terrain has rustic trails and old wood roads that will be improved and connected to Rhine's Forest and the Reed Family Farm and Woods. And that trail network not only goes into Falmouth, but also up to Knights Pond. Mill Brook has beautiful cascading waterfalls that are, there's about five of waterfalls that look similar to this, and ten smaller ones. The geology is also really fascinating to see in this property as well, so it's beautiful, beautiful spot, and arguably, I think, one of the prettiest spots in all of Cumberland. The public benefits are that we're protecting the rural character of the town of Cumberland. The community talks a lot about protecting rural character, and this exemplifies smart growth, where we'd be protecting the rural parts of the town and developing the center areas as a denser area in the center. The recreation will add miles of trails, hiking, fishing, nature observation, and a venue for programs and events, provides habitat for wildlife, water quality protection for the east branch of the Piscataqua River and Casco Bay, and also provides storm water management with the frequency and intensity of storms that are occurring. It's good to have some natural areas that are gonna be able to absorb some of that intensity of the water flow. And also, carbon sequestration, which we have a goal in the town of protecting a thousand more acres in the town of Cumberland to help with the carbon sequestration, and this would be the first parcel towards that one thousand acres. We also host a lot of events on the land trust, we have our Get Out Nature Walks, we're hosting a climate change series right now, we do hikes and snowshoes, we have lots of opportunities that we will be hosting events at this property. The project timeline is that we have, we now have an option agreement to purchase the land and fee. We hope to close on the property by April twenty twenty-five, and that's generally because we'll probably be waiting for grant funds to be coming in. So in the meantime, we're raising funds, we're completing due diligence, we're gonna begin to prepare management plans and coordinate with the LC, Lands and Conservation Commission on the trail network, so lots to do. Let's see, yeah, so, the, I'm gonna have Rod talk about the project budget, and he'll explain our plan for that.
Good evening, my name is Rod Vogel, Philip Street, here in Cumberland Center, and I am the board president for Shabig and Cumberland Land Trust for the last two and a half years, and been on the board for roughly ten or eleven years or so. So, talking numbers, we don't have the numbers up there? Okay, so I'm just gonna read the numbers versus showing you the numbers. The total that we're looking to raise for this project is nine hundred and two thousand dollars even. That includes the cost of the land, which is six hundred and sixty thousand roughly, the due diligence that we've had to do to get ready to purchase this property, the stewardship reserve that we'll use to steward this property in perpetuity, and project management costs. These funds will come from both public and, we hope, public and private sources, like many of our projects have in the past, including Knights Pond and Rhine's Two. We have written and applied for six hundred and fifty thousand in grants thus far. As Penny mentioned, we have, the two of us are going up to Augusta tomorrow to present in front of the Land for Means Future Board for a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant that Penny wrote and applied for a month or so ago. We also have a grant into the U.S. Forest Service Community Forest Program, a similar entity, or this same entity that helped fund the Rhine's Two project years ago, and we have a three hundred thousand dollar request into them, and we should know by the end of May, right? Yeah, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we should have word on that. That's a national grant program, so we are up against some significant projects nationally. We already have received some funding, seems to be the Casco Bay Estuary Partnership is always the first to come in, which is great, with a twenty-five thousand dollar grant that we've already received, and they're very, very excited about this project, as they were with the Rhine's Two project several years ago. I'm also extremely pleased to present that just the other night, I think it was maybe Saturday night, I finally heard from, we have fifteen board members on the CCLT board. Historically, we have had one hundred percent financial participation or philanthropic support for our annual fund. Really, since the Knights Pond project over ten years ago, we've also made a pact, so to speak. It's not a requirement, but we've made this pact to have one hundred percent financial philanthropic support for capital projects as well, both on the island of Shabig and here in Cumberland. So I'm thrilled to say that we did reach one hundred percent. Not everybody's committed to a dollar amount, because some people are traveling and need to talk to their spouse, but we have raised over sixty-three thousand dollars from our board, which I believe may be a record from our board, which is, just warms my heart. And many of us on the board have stretched because of the importance of this project. I stood in front of you all ten or eleven years ago, I'm not sure I was on the board, actually, then of CCLT, but I, you know, lived down the road from Knights Pond, and I was urging you to consider, I think it was four hundred thousand or so, if my memory serves me correct, that the town invested in Knights Pond, and the importance of that. We also had an LMF grant as well, roughly two hundred and twenty-six thousand, I think it was, from the LMF program. The importance of going to the private sector, whether it's businesses, foundations, or individuals, and share the diversity of the funding that we receive for these projects, it's critically important. So, thank you for your consideration. We've received many letters of support, as Penny mentioned earlier, also from Representative Moriarty, thank you for your letter, Steve, but many others from a diverse set of audience, stakeholders, including Sally Stockwell, who you all know well, I don't see her in the room, neighboring land trusts, the mountain biking community with Greater New England Mountain Biking Association, folks in Casco Bay, the friends of Casco Bay and the Casco Bay Estuary Partnership, educators here in town as well, as well as businesses here in town, including Dara Bistro down the street. So we're really thrilled with that, and we appreciate your letter, that'll mean a lot tomorrow when we go in front of the LMF board. So as Penny said, we have a close collaboration with you all, and we really appreciate that. I wanted to just end with a story, a bit different than Penny's opening story, which I loved. So, I don't know, those of you that saw the Northern Lights on, over the weekend, or was it Friday night, I can't remember already. One of our staff members was up at Knights Pond, we had an image to show, I'm sorry, it's not up here, it's an incredible image, I saw incredible sky from my back deck on Philip Street, amazingly. And Stacy, our staff member, was up there, she was there with one other person. I'm not sure if Stacy's spouse was with her, but this individual was thrilled to be at Knights Pond, from Portland, just migrated here from Chicago, and came all the way to Cumberland to see the Northern Lights to Knights Pond. And this person had just heard about it, I forgot actually the story of how the person heard about it, whether it was social media or friends, but I think this property, for sure, Watson Woods, is gonna provide that same opportunity for people, not only in Cumberland and our neighboring communities, to see these incredible cascading falls. If you think the waterfall at Rhines is great, oh my gosh, I, I don't know, for those of you that may have walked that property, I'd never walked it until the board members walked it, because we weren't allowed to cross the Mill Brook, it is incredible. So, thank you very much for your consideration, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
That's great, thank you very much, Rod, and thank you, Penny. I think maybe we'll open it up for a little discussion here on the council, but I guess I did have an initial first question. We've got folks, it's budget season, right, we're talking about the budget tonight, we've got folks that are talking about critical roles in our community and how those are funded. I wanted to talk, Mr. Manager, can you maybe give us some background on how a contribution like this to obviously a very important project is funded versus other things in our budget are funded, and where these, where these funds come from, just to make a distinction there for people?
Happy to. Several years ago, oh gosh, well over twenty years ago now, the town set up impact fees for the development of the community, and with those impact fees also came a cap on building permits and so forth. But those impact fees are set up for recreation purposes and land acquisition. Also, at the same time, the first affordable housing project was built on Tuttle Road at Crossing Brook. The silent second mortgages there were set up, and over time, those mortgages would be paid back to the town if they transferred ownership from affordability to basically market rate. Now that the affordability index is, an affordable buyer could afford a house of about four hundred and twenty thousand, and the last house that was basically untouched over thirty years at Crossing Brook sold for over six hundred and fifty thousand, that likelihood is probably not going to continue. About half the homes have kind of fallen out of the affordability program. That program itself was earmarked to generate over time over one point five million dollars. So, there are multiple funds that basically go into our land acquisition reserve fund. We have always set aside money, we have rarely ever had to take from the general fund to fund these type of initiatives. As Rod explained, that's exactly where the money for Knights Pond Reserve came from. We continue to set it aside, it's a designated revenue fee for that initial purpose, and I think the directive of the council, I don't know if it was six or eight years ago, maybe even ten now, was to look at properties that had continuity and contiguous borders with other properties. We weren't just kind of grabbing properties as they came up. This was done very purposefully. I think the, the land trust also understands that, and that continues to be our, our goal. So, this would be coming out of land acquisition reserve and not from the general.
General fund, okay, great. Any questions from councillors?
How healthy is that fund, Bill?
It honestly depends, it depends on sales, and what we try to use every year is, impact fees are used to pay off mostly the bonds. This would, this would basically wipe it out for now, but like I said, there's about twenty more sales in Crossing Brook that over time will probably generate six to seven hundred thousand more. So, this, this will balance this out for a little bit, and we'll have to wait as it builds up a little bit more.
Is there anything we should be, sorry? On the horizon we should be thinking about, or do we feel comfortable with this?
Well, it meets the following, the objectives that the council set to look at continuity and connectivity, and this has been on a lot of people's minds as a property that would come up that would be fairly desirable to develop as well. So, I think they, them jumping to the front of the line, the heirs wanting to keep it as part of the family in perpetuity, I think, is why they did it, and I think it's, I think this would be good for the town. If other projects do come forward, we'll have to look at other options.
Councilor Story King.
Yes, this property's been on our radar for quite a long time. I actually had an appointment to meet with the landowner at one point, and then his wife canceled it, just to talk about, you know, what his willingness would be, and they're, they've both passed, and they have no children, so it's gone to a niece, niece, is it a Medley's niece, or?
It's a niece.
Yeah. And she's trying to respect their desire to keep it undeveloped, but it is an incredible piece of property, and I wanna recognize that a hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. But we do save for things like this. And there's Shabig and, the Cumberland and Shabig Land Trust have been incredible partners with us my entire eighteen years on the town council, and in fact, some of my town council stipend goes to them on a regular basis. I sort of divide it up around town, but I have enormous respect for the work that they're doing to preserve land, not just, you know, fields and recreation spots, but farms, the work they did to help preserve Spring Brook Farm, a working farm, they have their feet grounded in reality. And that said, for me, it feels like a no-brainer, a hundred thousand dollars towards seventy-nine acres, when the school just spent almost a million for a half an acre. This feels like a no-brainer to me, and it absolutely has my support.
Councilor Cup.
I just have a question for Penny, and I'm probably a little bit more fortunate than Loos. I've hunted this property for years, Medley Watson gave me permission to hunt on his land as long as I stayed away from his house.
Yeah.
And he was a crush of the old guy, until you got to know him, Penny, as you probably know. Just a question for you, Penny, looking at the map, Mill Brook is in probably seventy-five percent of this property that you purchased, and twenty-five percent, I believe, is in the Galladets, and I assume it's Galladets, I'm not sure. Is there gonna be an issue with people in the Galladets? And the only reason I ask, Mrs. Galladet came out to me one year when I was hunting and told me that her land was posted, very politely, and I agreed, you know, and I told her I had permission from Medley. I just don't want a conflict with people walking in there, and I'm sure you guys will take care of it. I mean, this piece of land is a gem, if you ever get to walk it, the waterfalls in the brook is just breathtaking. Ten years ago, I came across a waterfall, and I never knew it existed then, I mean, it's just unbelievable, I mean, and Shirley, you hit it right on the head, you know, the, the price of this land is a steal. I mean, anybody in this town would scoff it up for that amount of money. So, more power to you, I mean, I think it's a great deal, so. But I do just wanna be aware of the Galladets, so.
Yep, so, we actually have negotiated a boundary line agreement with the Galladets, and it's gonna be, the Watson property will be, the boundary will be the creek. So, the Watson property will be on one side, and the Galladet property will be on the other, and that's gonna continue for, to the next property as well, the Aiken property, so we've negotiated two boundary line agreements to resolve those issues.
Perfect. That's all I have.
Councilor Bill.
I wholeheartedly support this purchase, this is, the population of the town of Cumberland is not going to decrease, it's going to increase, and as the population increases, the opportunities to exercise, to recreate, it becomes more and more important, and these Keystone properties, if you will, are so important to preserve, not so much for human use, but for habitat, for carbon sequestration, any number of different things, water quality in the area. I've lived here a long time, and I too hunted on that property when I was a boy, I haven't done a lot of hunting since then, but recently, the town retained ownership of Turkey Lane as a through, through road, and so people can still walk Turkey Lane and access that property from both sides. And so, people can still walk Turkey Lane and access that property from both sides of Main Street and Range Road. Again, you know, I look at some of the other purchases that have been made for the community. Knights Pond area, the top of Blueberry Hill, I remember as a kid being up there with an AM transistor radio with my buddies, you know, and the biggest thing was to tune into WWVA, Wheeling, West Virginia, and listen to Wolfman Jack because you could get, that kind of dates me too, I'm sorry about that.
We've gotten off topic.
Yeah, I just heard him on Spotify recently.
Never mind, but you know, these are the kind of things that, you know, that I remember as a kid and other people will remember in their own, you know, childhood, you know, going down to see these falls. So, it's, this is a great thing for the community.
Thank you.
I just had a question. What, and this is more out of curiosity than the price tag, because I think my other councillors have kind of made it very clear, this is a great purchase. But what's the state of the invasive species on this particular property?
So, the property has been harvested in the past and there are, there is some buckthorns. So, we'll be working together with the Land and Conservation Commission because it makes sense for us to manage this block as a whole. And because the Conservation Commission has already done a great job creating forest management plans and use management plans for Rhine's Forest, then we'll be able to, you know, mirror that on the Watson property. So, we'll be addressing those as we go along.
Great, thanks.
That's great. This is a public discussion point, so if there's anyone from the public that would like to address the council on this topic, please feel free to step up. Otherwise, Penny and Rod, thank you so much. Okay, seeing none, is there any other comments from the council on this? Just wanted to be very clear at the beginning that the funding source for a contribution like this comes from a very different place than the general mill rate and the general fund that we raise taxes for every day, other expenditures for the town. So, Councillor Bell.
Just a point of interest. You talk about looking at this for decades. And one of the things that we strive to do and have had conversations about is identifying other properties throughout the town where there are elderly landowners or pieces of property that have the potential to come up for sale. And, you know, we've talked about how to obtain rights of first refusal and to make sure that we're, you know, we are actively engaged in considering, you know, other properties throughout the town. And this is, these are all important discussions.
I'd like to give you a motion.
Please.
I move to approve the request from the Shebegan Cumberland Land Trust for $100,000 towards the purchase of Watson Woods' property adjacent to the Rhine's Forest.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion from the council on those motions? Okay, seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor? Appears to be unanimous. Thank you. And great work to the CCLT, appreciate you very much.
Continue, great work.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, 24-041, to consider and act on acceptance of the Knights Pond Forest Management Plan and to forward the plan to the Cumberland North Yarmouth Joint Standing Committee. This was a plan that was prepared, I think, back in 2022, if I'm not mistaken, looking at the dates. It's been kind of sitting, waiting for, I think the CCLT understandably, Mike Schwinn and others have been waiting for the council to get to this, to approve it, to push it to the Joint Standing Committee in North Yarmouth so that the plan can actually be undertaken and some action can happen there. I don't know, Mr. Schwinn, if you had any comments or anything you wanted to add this evening, or if you'd just like us to kind of move forward with our discussion? Oh, please. I think Todd is going to come up and address this, right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Todd Onto, Gray Road. And I am the, I guess now the chair of the Forestry Subcommittee, taking over from Gordon recently. So, yeah, I just wanted to thank you for having this on the agenda for considering the approval. Just spent a couple of minutes, I guess, talking a little bit about the management plan and hope that we can have the, get the council's approval on this so that it can go to the Joint Standing Committee. So, a couple of highlights from the management plan, of course, it's a big document. It's got a lot of information, 100 pages plus, I think, with a lot of data. So, I think kind of some of the highlights really of the management plan are that, you know, it really shows what a wonderful property Knights Pond Preserve is. It's in really good condition. It was well managed before it was acquired. And the property doesn't have some of the issues with invasive species, for example, that we have on some of our other town forests, which is very nice. Great condition. It's also got a unique natural community in Oak Hickory Forest, which is a rare natural community in the state of Maine. So, that's really neat that we have that on our property. So, the management plan provides for some recommendations. Just wanted to briefly cover those recommendations. So, that Oak Hickory stand that I mentioned, of course, that makes sense to protect this as a reserve, partly because we don't know a lot about how we manage for an Oak Hickory Forest in Maine because it's such a rare, rare natural community. So, while we kind of work with the experts and understand kind of what the options are, the recommendation is to protect it as a reserve. There's three stands on the Preserve where our town forester has recommended no harvest to allow for the forest to continue to grow. Again, the forest is in good condition, very healthy shape. And so, the recommendation is to continue to allow the forest to continue to grow for the next 10 years that this management plan covers. And then there's three stands where, outside of buffer areas, that we recommend around the pond itself and around the riparian areas, it's fairly typical to have these reserves around these riparian areas to protect the water quality of them. Outside of these buffer areas, it was recommended that we could do some light harvesting, some selective cutting in the future. That would all be done really with the primary goal to, you know, maintain the health of the forest, maintain the resilience of the forest in face of, you know, insect pests and climate change impacts and that, that sort of thing. Other than that, there is just some erosion issues at the end of Greeley Extension that was recommended that we address those erosion issues as soon as we can, just to kind of stem the erosion, I guess, going on at that point. So, one last topic, I guess I wanted to address is that when we had presented this to, this management plan to the Joint Standing Committee with North Yarmouth a number of weeks ago, there was some question around the FAA parcel that was shown on one of the maps. The CCLT map shows this FAA parcel. And there was some confusion as to whether or not that was a part of the Knights Pond Preserve or not, because it isn't shown on the forest stand map. And so, we just wanted to clarify that that Knights Pond Conservation easement is not part of Knights Pond Preserve. I'm sorry, the FAA Conservation easement, which is owned by Royal River Conservation Trust. And so, there are no management obligations for that FAA easement. So, it is just the, just what is being represented in this map that's in the management plan. So, that's all I have.
Great, thank you for summarizing that, Todd. That's helpful. May I leave you up just in case there's any questions, if you don't mind? Quick question on the FAA parcel. On the map that I'm looking at, there's an FAA tower at the end of that private road. Are you saying that none of the forestry management plan would apply to that entire portion of the parcel where that FAA tower is, or just on the road where the easement?
It's that entire parcel around where the FAA tower is.
So, in this map that I'm looking at, it's titled Knights Pond Preserve, and it's got a lighter color green for that parcel?
Correct.
You're saying that would not be subject to the terms of this plan, right?
Correct.
I had another question for you as well. In the, I think it was a little bit more towards the introductory section of this, it talked about that this plan was, it says, "This management plan is intended to cover forest management decisions on Knights Pond Preserve in Cumberland and North Yarmouth, Maine for 20 years. There should be no need," then the next sentence says, "There should be no need to update the recommendations in this plan until 2032." So, that's only eight years from now. I guess I'm just, is there a disconnect there or am I just misinterpreting this?
Well, so, when the plan was written was in 2022 and it was written as a 10-year management plan. So, it covers the management activities that would occur in that 10 years. And then, the management plan would be revisited after that 10-year period.
Okay, so it's effectively a 10-year plan, so, okay.
As I understand it, yes.
Yeah, Mark, I've got a bunch of land and tree growth up north. Same thing, I've got to redo, even though I haven't harvested, I've still got to redo the plan every.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. I guess I was just confused because the previous sentence says, "This is intended to cover the forest management decisions for 20 years." So, I'm wondering if that's a typo or?
I don't know.
You may not know.
Yeah.
You're not the author of the plan, I understand.
Precisely, yeah.
Okay, so regardless, it needs to be updated periodically, usually every decade or so.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Answer my question.
I think this is something that we have put off for quite some time, that we need to get moving. Any of you that have sat through those Joint Standing Committee meetings know that we're there. The LCC is there asking us to approve this so we can actually get going because this document is effectively just collecting proverbial dust and nothing is happening with it. So, I'm in favor of moving it forward, but I'd be happy to hear any comments that folks have.
There is a piece of property on the, if you're looking at the map, between the yellow and the pink, that the town of North Yarmouth is. At our last Joint Standing Committee, they indicated to us that they were close to acquiring that property to make it a complete loop around. And so, I snuck back and asked LCC leadership how easy it would be to apply this plan to that piece of property. And something the Joint Standing Committee can continue to discuss, but it's easy-peasy.
Yep, really good point.
I think when we left the Joint Standing.
You might want to flip your mic.
I think when we left Joint Standing last time, we weren't going to discuss it until the acquisition was finalized.
About rolling it out.
About rolling that out, yeah. We weren't going to worry, that wasn't going to stall this moving forward.
Right, nor should it.
Yep.
Nor should it, yeah.
Okay. Councillor Bell?
My question was the reverse of that. Can we apply this plan to the property rather than?
Right, and to that point, if I could comment on that, I think if that, the acquisition of that property does occur and then once that is finalized, you know, we would, it would be fairly simple to amend the plan and we could, you know, we would want to have Paul, the forester, out there to look at the property. My understanding is that it's primarily wetlands.
Yeah.
And so, there, because it's wetlands, there wouldn't be any forest management that would happen on that.
And a lot of it's within, you know, the 100 feet of the pond too.
Correct, yeah.
That's protected.
Councillor Bell, did you have something?
I think this is kind of a fascinating document. Read through the mix of what the wood species are in there. I was surprised at the absence of white oak and the tremendous amount of red oak, hemlock, beech, hickory, but I really surprised, there was no mention of any white oak on that property. Again, growing up, I knew Dick Knight quite well. He was a contemporary of my father's. I plowed the road into the pond. I skated it as a kid, lots of good times on that property. The Old County Road, which is the road that goes over the top of Blueberry Hill and comes down under 115, the FAA towers on that piece of land. And one of the things that I brought up at the last Joint Standing Committee meeting was whether the deeds on the Old County Road, the section of North Yarmouth, have reverted to the center of the road or those deeds had never been rectified, in which case, I believe there's still legal access through there because that was, I know that the town of Cumberland dealt with that years ago in abandoning our section of the Old County Road, but I'm not sure that North Yarmouth did. And that might allow some access into the backside of that. But as far as moving this ahead, I find nothing wrong with it and I think it's a good plan and we should adopt it.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone from the public that would like to address the council on this plan? Okay, seeing none. I would happily accept a motion if we're done discussing it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give you a motion. I move to accept Knights Pond Forest Management Plan and forward it to the Cumberland North Yarmouth Joint Standings Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Just got the thumbs up from Mike in the back, so that's great.
And I just want to make a comment. Paul Larabee does outstanding work. I've known Paul for years and you couldn't hire a better guy, so.
Well, even better, he is not running for reelection at the Select Board in New Gloucester, so we're just going to have more of his time.
Like I said, he's an extremely smart man.
Yeah.
All right, moving on here. 24-042, to hear a report from the Finance Director regarding third quarter financials.
Mark, did you have to have the biggest meeting? Is there anything up here?
I follow you, so you can do a good job.
Huh? Okay. Hi, Catherine Johnson, Finance Director. So, our quarter three landed us a little bit below where I wanted to be for revenues, so I got a little worried. So, I did it through today and we are well in a good area. We're at about 110% of our revenues through today. So, I feel much better about that and our expenses are spot on in terms of where they should be. The budget lines that did go, have gone over, which is insurance, is which we've discussed, we have accommodated that for our future budget that we're going to discuss after this. So, those overages have been corrected for the next budget. So, I feel good about the next budget and I feel really good about where we are with our revenues. Is there any questions, Bill?
Councillor Douglas.
This just, I was thinking about this earlier. Can you remind me? Actually, oh, never mind. Thank you.
That was an excellent question, Bailey. Thank you.
She withdraws the question.
I don't know how to frame it. It's, I feel like we talked one point about where we were on a point system for insurance and when that would taper off. Is that ringing a bell to you?
You talked about the workers' comp?
Yeah. Do you know what year that tapers off again?
Next summer.
So, FY '26?
FY '25.
'25.
But it will affect like half.
Half of '25, half of '26.
And half of '26, yep.
Okay, thank you. Got my thoughts together. Anything else?
I had a question on some of the, well, so in other words, for Q3, you weren't feeling great about where we were in terms of the revenue side, but now.
We were getting kind of stagnant.
But you've tapped into year-to-date for Q4 and you feel much better on that.
Right, like we're at 110%.
Okay.
So, we've gone above the 100%. And this is also one of our big months for excise tax. Revenue sharing has not come in yet for May and June, so that will also add to that. And that's one of the biggest months for revenue sharing.
Do we have any updates on the revenue sharing? Because I know that that was something, I don't know if you're going to address this as part of the budget?
I can.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure because I know that was a big hole in what we were missing in terms of the revenues previously. Okay. Councillor Bell.
If our revenues are greater than expected, as you say, will that affect how we go with end-of-year fund transfers?
Yes.
Yes.
Councillor Cupp.
Can you tell us how our excise tax is trending? I mean, I'm a used car salesman, so.
Well, I was worried about that and I can tell you, Bill, I told Bill I was a little worried because it did get kind of stagnant. And it's not as mu, it's not rolling in as much as it was in previous years, but I have my thing up here.
And we're seeing that too. I mean, that's why I brought the question. And we're seeing that too. I mean, that's why I brought the question up too. I mean, I think people have actually slowed down by new vehicles.
I think the interest rates is what's really killing us right now. And I think as, when they ever come down, which I don't think is going to happen this year, I think that'll push the, the, the used car market. The new car market, I think, is going to be hot only because the manufacturers have subsidized the interest rate.
And that's exactly what we're finding. The manufacturers are realizing the interest rate is hurting them, so they're dropping theirs down. You know, you're seeing zero for 60 months now, so it's coming around, so.
To just give you an example, so we budget two, two million roughly. Last year, I think we ended the year a little above 2.3. Right now, as of today, we're at 2.1. So we're, you know, it would, so we're in sequence, but not as much, I don't think. We're going to hit that 2.3.
Can you address, and you may have done this as part of our budget workshops, the abatements? I know we budget $1. Is that the tax, the senior tax bill, like 290?
Right, so that revenue that came in, you'll see, it's part of the homestead. It's hitting the homestead account and the revenue account.
I was talking more on the, on the expense side, going from a.
Abatement, from a dollar to.
To a dollar to 300 and 2,000.
So we got that money back and it's, it's in the homestead exemption line, on the revenue side.
Okay.
So it does wash.
All right.
See if you were paying attention, that's all.
Yeah, well.
Good job.
I'm trying to pay attention. We got it.
Good job.
Also, it looks like some of these revenues are short just because, given the nature of what they are. I think about the golf course being short on revenue and all these other things, when the peak season's going to be May, June, July.
So those have all rebounded too. Yeah, with what we're looking at now, those have all rebounded and are above budget now since the quarter three ended, so.
Okay.
And that's why I did that exercise. I just wanted to know where we were at today.
Any, yeah, and I appreciate that. Any questions for Katie from the council? Before I open it up, I'll open it up to the public if, if there's a general questions. Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. Appreciate the update.
Mr. Chair, the, the next item is to basically authorize the year-end transfers. I, I would table that until your July 23 meeting. That's typically when you would have the year-end numbers a lot more solid, very closer, much closer to the closeout of the year entirely. And that will most likely on July 23 is when you'll be setting the tax rate for FY '25. So for, for my, for my purposes, I think, you know, we can, we can talk about the year-end transfers, but I think they'll be more updated in, in June and July. We can get those to the finance committee for action at your July meeting.
Okay. We talked about that a little bit during our finance committee meeting this evening, so.
I was just going to give you a motion.
Oh, excuse me, please.
If you're ready.
I'm ready.
I moved to table end-of-year transfers until.
July 22.
The July 22, 2024 meeting.
Before we get a second on that, I think Counselor Douglas pointed out to me that we need to move to accept the third quarter financial report as presented. So I believe there needs to be a motion there.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Counselor Cop. Second from Counselor Vale. Any discussion on those motions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so now we also have a motion on the next agenda item to, or excuse me, to table.
Table.
Until the July meeting. I think we just had one motion on that. Do we have a second? Okay, Counselor Douglas with the second. Okay, any further discussion on that?
Can't.
Excuse me, good point. Gosh, I will learn this before, before the last meeting. Okay, all those in favor, to table. Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda, we have twenty-four dash zero four four to hold a public hearing to consider and act on adoption of the fiscal year 2025 municipal budget. And I believe we're turning this over to our town manager, Mr. Shane.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know it's a long agenda, but this is a very important item as well. But I'll try to do, go as quickly as I can through it. But the FY '25 budget has been an interesting exercise. We've televised all the budget meetings, which we never did before, but that was an interesting process. And hopefully, we can continue to do that. As you discussed earlier in the, in the meeting, we talked about the increase of the municipal budget of about $270,000 or a little over 4.2%, and that's net of revenues. That budget includes about $880,000 in additional expenses and about $609,000 in new revenues. If you recall, that budget also includes a reduction in revenue sharing of 150,000. And that was done primarily because of the revenue formula, the revenue sharing formula. That's, that formula has two parts to it. Revenue two is where we lost the money. And what happened is the formula was adjusted to go back to the old times when we were getting all 5% in revenue sharing. That number went up to as high as $1.7 million to the town of Cumberland and was less than $400,000 at one time, probably less than 10 years ago. That has grown over the time that Governor Mills took over and restored it. The last piece of that was to adjust revenue two by 0.3%. It was 11.3, it was 11% and it went to 11.3. And when that 0.3 was increased, that's when we lost 100, we lost almost $200,000 in revenue two and gained $50,000 in revenue one. Trying to explain that formula, you would be glazed over and just throwing pens at me in about two minutes. But it's, it's all formula-based. I talked to the revenue sharing office today, Main Revenue Services, and they said many, many communities were in the same boat and this is, this will be close to the new norm. By state law, 5% of all the gross revenues that the state collects is supposed to go back to the municipalities. I think we got down as low as 2% in the past and now we've rebounded fully back to the five. So as those revenues grow, so will our, our proportion of revenue sharing. But last year we peaked and this year we came back to what is intended to be the new formula and the, the former formula that they use for the cost-sharing basis. Many, many communities were in the same boat. It's hard to explain when you have a $900 million surplus how we lost $150,000 in revenue sharing. But we did and that's the best I can do for an explanation. Some of the budgets that we looked at over the course of the budget review. IT, for instance, we looked at, there's, this budget includes some additional new equipment. That new equipment will allow basically closed captioning of our meetings on Channel 2. It will allow, we hope, very shortly, if you have a Roku and you, you have a smart TV, you'll be able to use that to basically get us on Channel 2 again. That has been absent for many, many years. Time Warner and about 14 different towns, including us, have been in a kind of a stalemate of a legal battle for several years now. That helped, it didn't change much in our cable franchise agreements, but I foresee that some slight changes will be coming forward. I think in the near future, you'll have to look at re-adopting your cable TV ordinance to kind of update it. But we were kind of waiting until this legal battle was over and it doesn't appear to be going very quickly. And I think it'll be several more years before we get resolution. But in the end, I think it'll be a better, a better for the consumers and better for the local cable watchers to get back to the lower channels, not that 13, 22 or whatever channel we were at. We're also looking at adjustments into planning, primarily because of the beginning of a comp plan and a full-time staff. As you, as you know, Carla Nixon has retired. She's helping me out with the next two planning board meetings. But we will have to hire full-time staff with, which has been a little bit of a challenge. We're up to five or six applicants now. We'll be starting the interview process shortly with the new, new town manager, the planning board chair. Carla has also volunteered to assist in that process with us. So I think we'll, we'll have somebody onboard hopefully very soon. When you look at the 4% increase in the Code Enforcement Office budget, you also have to remember that budget produces more than it, than we expend in salaries and other things. So that's, it basically goes to net zero. Waste disposal, you'll see a slight decrease of 24,000. I, I know we've had a lot of comments, especially on social media, related to the loss of the bulky waste, but that was contracted out last July. That's when we signed the new contract with Gasella. Was a significant savings over, I think, over a million dollars over the five-year contract. But neither Gasella or Waste Management would bid on the curbside collection of bulky waste. So a lot of not happy people with that, including myself, but we didn't have a choice. Honestly, we didn't have a choice. But it's very difficult if you don't have a pickup truck to basically go to Riverside or wherever you could go. It's fairly, it is challenging. The next items that you see increases are in the Valhalla budgets. All of those go to net zero. The revenues there outweigh their expenses. Has been that way for over four or five years now and we continue to do well. Nick and Brad have done an outstanding, outstanding job at the golf facility. Nick Plummer has been running the show now at least four years and has done a great job for us. Recreation is recreation. Huge increase, 17%, but they'll blow that out of the water with the additional revenues for next year. I think Pete did a great job last month to talk to you about the state of recreation, about facilities, about staffing. And I think, I think we all have a better understanding of the challenges that we have. We have an amazing, amazing staff that does an outstanding job for recreation services. That kind of leads into the segue with active living. They work very closely together. They work together on our senior programs. We have over 100 attending monthly luncheons down at Valhalla. I think Devin has done an outstanding job and those two support each other very well with programming and staffing and just sharing of resources. When we look at general assistance, we went to the county last year for contracting these services. I think that was a very, very good move. I think we have expertise in staff that we wouldn't have internally. We were basically trying to share employees from the clerk's office and that works until it doesn't. And it really was a little bit of a stressor for staffing. But now that we have the county onboard, that is taken care of. And I think if you've met Paige, she's very, she's very good at what she does and our reimbursements have gone up. And I think we're going to be in good shape with that budget as well. The insurance budget was a big hit of, you see that at 35%. It, it didn't come all from just one insurance. Some of that money came basically from workers' comp coverages that we hadn't budgeted for in the past. Just to finish and close the loop on what Katie reported on workers' comp, while we're going to get a benefit for half the year, our major hits on that budget are gone, are about gone. We have basically small claims that are left on there that'll come off the books next year. And we are working diligently with them through the finance department and through Chris Bolduc to basically get into safety committees and more intensive, a kind of review of our operations. What our agent through Main Municipal has told us, that could all by itself lower our budget somewhere in the 35 to 40,000 just in that participation. So we're looking forward to see those numbers over the next year drop and stabilize a little bit as well. On the good side, however, our health insurance only went up 2%. Now, it's a million-dollar budget, so 2% is a lot of money, but it's still, it's better than 22% and 30%, some of the massive increases we've seen over the years. And that has stabilized. Harvard Pilgrim has been a great company to work with. Our employees are happy with them. And I think they've done a really good job for us. And also, we added additional monies to our HR reserve so that when people depart our employment, we don't have big spikes in their, in their department operating budget. We have a reserve to basically pay out those monies that are due to them, typically in accrued vacations. And then we also have $25,000 in there for assistance with HR. We do not have a full-time HR person. We basically contract that out now with Angela Hansen, who does a lot of the hiring and other issues, training our staff, working with staff on disciplinary issues as well as performance issues and performance evaluations as well. And that has worked out very, very well. Our streetlights, they're up 10%. You see that there. That's a self-funded account, if you remember. We did, we purchased all the LED streetlights in town and then we factored in about a three or four-year payback. So it's a deficit-funded account that I think we have one more or half a year left and will be paid off on the streetlights themselves and will be just paying about, I, I don't know what it is, about 7,000 or 8,000 in electricity, which comes out of our solar field, so we get a full credit for that as well. So things are really good there. We're just paying ourselves back for some of the things we look forward to handling internally. Municipal buildings, I was getting part-time additional help while we doing a lot of the work at senior housing, changing out most of those kitchen units that have been there 30-plus years. That should end over the next couple of years, but it does require some additional part-time assistance. And then the capital improvements, looks like a slight decrease, but the majority of that funding will come out of the TIF funds and about 200,000 out of end-of-year transfers. So all of that said, the, you know, big, the big pie that we put together, that's a municipal budget, basically comes out at about a 6.4% increase in expenses over last year, but, but a pretty robust increase in revenues, mostly through Valhalla and for, and through recreation and leaving that at about a 4.2% increase on our, our impact on the budget. Again, had we not lost the money in revenue sharing and had we not lost the money in the bag sales, because we've eliminated the bag sales going forward, I believe it would be a mistake to, you know, continue that program. I think, I know Falmouth is and as is, I believe, North Yarmouth. I think it would be difficult to enforce and I think there would be, well, you'd have to use staff or pay. Chris, the company that sells us the bags basically offered us a service that would have added 10 cents to the cost of each bag that we sold. And we figured that out to be about $40,000 a year to pay for their random three-time-a-year inspection of our trash and give us a report. I don't believe that's money well-spent and I think we should probably move on from that as we're going to have to get ready for something very new in the automated system that we really have no choice. The smaller, smaller vendors that can do, you know, a couple of hundred stops a day are non-existent for our community. We have over 500 stops a day. Many of you see the, the trash companies out there, working pretty hard and diligently on our behalf. And they are doing it in over five days now. So I don't know how we would be able to get other vendors in here to do that. We have tried. We advertised when we put out the solid waste contract and we basically got two bids, so. And we actually solicited through my role at EcoMaine to try to get other out-of-state haulers, but nobody was willing to come in for such a small area. EcoMaine has tried unsuccessfully twice now to consolidate crews together so that a large area of Southern Maine, maybe a pocket in the north and in the south, could consolidate as one community for getting, attracting larger vendors in the future. This is the second strike. We get to, very close to negotiating a, a actual proposal and most communities have jumped out of that. So when we look at the same budget and ask, you asked last time to, what does that look net? We did some work here. The green are basically those accounts that are just about pay for themselves or, or make a little extra money. The yellow are those that, you know, generate some revenue. When we look at things like administration and police and fire and public works, a lot of those monies that we generate through, you know, excise tax, for instance, are typically supposed to be used and dedicated toward your roads and your infrastructure and enforcing your rules and those type of things. So you could spread the money out the best you want. Not every, every budget has dedicated fees. Like for, for instance, Valhalla, that's all dedicated fees. Recreation, the same thing. I mean, they're showing about a $62,000 cost for recreation last year, this coming year, but most likely that's all going to be covered. A library, 38% of the library is paid for by North Yarmouth. 38% of the fees that are in recreation are also paid by North Yarmouth. This year, recreation made money, so there was actually a credit toward North Yarmouth for next year. And capital improvements, you, you can do whatever you want. I basically tried to spread the revenues out, but there's still left about 282,000. You could basically wipe out a few of these accounts if you wanted to. It wasn't a exercise full of science. It was really more very subjective.
It wasn't a exercise full of science. It was really more very subjective. When you look at all the things we do with licensing and tax collection, everything, all that's done at the front counter, and you've got to give them some credit for some of the work they do, because they are our primary contacts with all our residents. So, when I look at the clerk's election budget and I look at the clerk budget, I see a lot of those fees and services that are, we collect in the revenues, all come through the clerk's, clerk's office. Interesting fact, Harbor Master, that budget, it's, it's not a huge budget, but nearly all of it, except for about forty-five hundred, is paid through now through mooring fees. In the past, if we got two thousand dollars a year, that was really fortunate. Your Coastal Waters Committee has done an excellent job in pulling that together, and I'm pretty proud of where that, where that has headed. So, overall, I think the revenues are strong, and I think we can be happy on, you know, where that is going. When we look at the last ten years and the mill rates, you know, data is the data. I mean, we have basically come up about a dollar-ten over the last ten years. Our impact on the mill rate, pretty flat, flat curve. The schools have been averaging, I think, about forty-five cents a year, while we've been averaging about eleven cents on the mill rate each year. Different challenges at this level, obviously. A lot of different mandates that we don't get at the school level, that the town doesn't get, but I think the difficulty for us is that we are, we are purposely trying to keep, keep the mill rate to something reasonable, and it's, it is difficult. It is a challenge, and we know we've got a bond coming up that's an important bond for the community and for the school district, but it's also going to lay out some additional challenges for you over the next few years. So, when we look at the tax impacts, I'm looking at about twenty-seven, about seventy-seven cents of the tax increase will be attributed to the school, four cents to the county, and about twenty-nine cents to the municipality. The biggest increase on the municipal side is that our TIF districts rose by about three-hundred-thousand dollars, and that's got to come from the municipal side of the equation, and that basically was the majority of the increase on the town side. When we relate that to, simplify it to how it impacts a house, I think that's usually what people want to hear about. If I own a two-hundred thousand, three-hundred, four, five, all the way to eight-hundred thousand, the impact is the same percentage-wise, but the dollar value obviously increases. So, we're looking at impacts of anywhere from two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty dollars, not thousand. I'll sell you, give everybody a heart attack out there. Thank God the guys are still here, but it's about two-hundred-and-twenty thou, uh, two, geez, Freudian slip again. A two-hundred-thousand-dollar house would generate about a two-hundred-and-twenty-dollar impact. We go to five-hundred thousand, it's about a five-hundred-and-fifty-dollar impact, and an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar house, about eight-eighty. It's, it's an expensive community to live in. I've said that before. It's, we have a very desirable community, but there will be impacts on services as we go forward. I'm going to basically jump, push this to the end, because I don't really want to jump into this just yet. I did want to talk a little bit about the TIF budget. We have eight TIF districts in town. They generate, obviously, revenues, and next year, they'll generate a significant amount of revenue, about three-point, let me just get to the right column here, because I can't see it on this slide here, the orange. They'll generate about three-point-three-seven million dollars. Right now, we're using about one-point-two million dollars for staffing, benefits, those type of things. Leases that we have for pump stations, for instance, on Blanchard Road, general expenses, those are all related to payroll and benefits. We're paying about seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars in bonds. Those are mostly on Route One Hundred and Range Road. And then, we have credit enhancement agreements of about three-hundred thousand that we pay for about eleven businesses right now in each of the eight TIF districts. We also have a capital expenses. We're looking to spend about two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand in paving. I have budgeted about three million dollars for a public safety tower. I don't think it's going to be that much. This is really a placeholder. Gas expenses, when I talk about capital outlay, to make sure that we're tracking Summit as they extend new gas mains, they'll be doing that, I hope, next year down Blackstrap Road when we go across the turnpike. They have a dual pipe that they're going to go across the turnpike with to get natural gas to the, to the other side of West Cumberland. And I also looked at six-hundred thousand on Skyview Drive for turning lanes and extension of the existing roadway. Bad news, we are back on hold with what we thought was back on track with Foley's Gym. They are reevaluating if they can make the numbers work, primarily because of the construction prices and the high interest rates. So, that project is not certain, and that's why I'm not sure how far we're going to go with this money. It may just sit there. That six-hundred thousand may, and, and this tower project may be reduced significantly, but we are still in a process right now where we are in deficit funding. That might be reduced by six or seven-hundred thousand. So, we, we're expected to come out of it in about three years, and then after that, you really need to think aggressively about what you want to do next, and we'll get into that a little bit more. This is the funding plan for next year for all eight TIF districts. You will see the deficit in each one of these in districts two through eight. This is the math box. This is something that Katie and I have set up over the last three months. She asked a really good question one day. She came to me, she said, "Bill, how much money do you owe in TIF District One if you're planning to extend that out in a few years?" And I honestly couldn't do the math, because we had not budgeted specifically. We had collectively had all our TIF money in a fund, but we hadn't assigned it directly to each fund. This is a very simple exercise to do. I was so glad that she, she caught this before Matt came, so I can sit down and say, "Here's where we're going." I basically zeroed out TIF One, TIF District One, so that as you get closer to the finish line, just look at how much your starting fund balance is in that account, and don't, don't overspend it, because you really would like to get to zero when you get, in a couple of years. Now, having said that, I've also shared with you that I really would like you to consider looking at a, an affordable housing TIF district in TIF District One, and as well as some of the other, the other items I'll talk about in a few minutes. We have essentially a master copy of this that I'm happy to share with any of you. It's a wallpaper. It's, it's about a three-foot by four-foot spreadsheet. Takes, very excited about getting one of these, but it helps me when we visualize on where we're going. And to me, the where we're going right now in the projects we have budgeted out, you see by, you know, by about four years out, we're back in the black, and then the problem becomes getting out of the really bad black part of it, because you'll have projects in the future that you'll have about ten-point-four million dollars worth of projects you can fund down the road. And what those are, are really up to you. I would push hard to see if you can include additional paramedic funding. We've done it successfully in TIF District Eight, where we funded already three paramedics that are already in the budget to help, to help with that. We have fire equipment there that you may look at and maybe say, maybe the fire equipment goes back to the general fund on the bond side, and we basically look at employment. So, for the next three to five years, you're going to be in a very TIF-centered mode, in a sense that that's where your capital, and that's where your growth will come from in trying to expand programming. The general fund will not have any money for you to really tap into for, while we go through the building process of a new school, and I would tell you that, that's okay, because we'll take a, we'll take a timeout, and we'll look at what we can do with the TIF funds, and I would encourage you to begin that process in the next fiscal year, so on April first of twenty-five. Maybe it's just TIF District One, but maybe you look at some other TIF districts and say, "We'd like to add affordable housing to that element." Now, when I get into this, the next big challenge that you're going to have is revaluation, and with revaluation, the one, one thing I would encourage you to start doing is educating people accurately, because the unfortunate thing, people think that because their home value is going to potentially go up fifty percent to a hundred percent in some cases, that the budget follows that. It's all about the math. It's about a numerator and a denominator, and the numerator, the top number, is the budget, and that's your town budget, your school budget, and your county budget. And the bottom number is the value of your entire community, and when you look at that, you basically say, "Okay, today's tax rate that we're looking at today, tonight, is about twenty-three, twenty-five. Our, our value of our community is one-point-five-million-dollar, uh, billion, B, B with a B, boy for B, billion dollars." So, if you're, if you do this math, and you come out with a four-hundred-thousand-dollar home, is paying about nine-thousand-three-hundred dollars in taxes today. Okay, let's fast forward. Say, we'll just throw a fifty percent number out. Say our value increases by fifty percent. This number is very close to what the state has us valued at today. I think it's going to be closer to two-point-five billion, but I'm just going to go with the state numbers, because this is real today. If you took that same budget and divided by two-point-three billion, you'd come out with a tax rate of fifteen-point-four-nine dollars per mil. So, a mil is, you know, basically a one-thousandth of your, of your tax rate. So, when you look at a one, a fifty percent increase to the value of your four-hundred-thousand-dollar home, one-point-five times four-hundred thousand gets you to six-hundred thousand. Now, your tax bill says your home was worth six-hundred thousand, but you're only paying fifteen-fourty-nine on the mil rate, which, look at where you come out to, nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars. It's within six dollars of what you're paying now. Now, there are things you need to think about, because if you had the Midnight Bandits come to your home and do the, you know, the no-permit construction method, we're going to find out. And unfortunately, that's what rises people's property values. As we do inspections, as we come out and examine properties, it's basically the public charge is supposed to be divided equitably among all common properties. So, if you've done a lot of work to your home, you're, and you didn't get permits, we'll find out eventually, and those will be adjusted with the new value. But if you did nothing other than keep up your home, you should be very close to where we end up. The problem with that is a lot of neighborhoods have done a lot of work to their homes, and you might be the only one, so the value of your property values might go up regardless if, if you don't do anything. But John is the person you want to sit down and talk to, but it's really just a math equation. If you really did very little to your home, it should be falling in that one-third of minimal, if no change at all. My house, for instance, I look at what it's listed at, scares the heck out of me. It's going to double, and I know, I know, I know my taxes aren't going to double, but the value is going to go up. If, if any of you will sell your property for what we have at tax debt, please raise your hand. I'll be over tomorrow, because that is, we are really off. On average, it's about a sixty percent increase in value that we're probably going to see, and that gets us a lot closer to that two-point-three billion as a community. We're not going after people if we undervalued your home for the last decade or, or more, since two thousand and eight, actually, since the last sixteen years. So, you got to pass for sixteen years, but you're going to, going forward, we want to get everybody to a fair level of taxation, and that's, that's all about equity. It's not about raising more money. In this equation here, we raised no more money. The budget stayed here, and these were the new, these were the new rates, and essentially, nothing changed with this home in the picture. So, it should be fairly close. Now, property values are going to be what they are. This is a very, very desirable community to live in, so just be patient. John is going to work as hard as he can. He's got a good team assembled. He's, I think he's the best assessor in the state. I really do. He's very knowledgeable. He understands government. He understands assessing, and he's a very bright man. He's done a lot of these. So, trust his judgment and work with him, and I think, in the end, we'll be okay. And then, finally, this being my last budget before the town council and before the community, I just wanted to share some of the challenges I believe we have ahead, and I just would encourage you, you need to be bold. There are some really tough decisions you are going to be faced with in the next five years. TIF District One and affordable housing, that will also lead to more abilities for transit in our community, and I'm not talking just the bus. I'm also talking train service. I'm also talking about potential train station at Styles Way. Bob, your ideas drive me crazy most of the time, but they actually, I look at them, I go, "Well, that's not that far out of the norm." And especially if TIF District One is extended for twenty years, you'll have money to work with that can fund a bunch of things. It can fund the trace, train station. It can fund bus service to your community. It can fund affordable housing. It can also fund the, an affordable housing director's position. Your housing task force asks you to consider funding a full-time person. Do it with the monies that you have through the business development and the growth on Route One. And just allow your future TIF districts, and this is something, pay, please pay attention to. Alyssa did something amazing with TIF District Eight. She allowed you the ability to throttle those monies back and forth each year between the general fund and the TIF funds. Have at least the flexibility to do it, even if you don't do it. Have the flexibility, because if you have the flexibility, then you have a lot more options on how you use and don't use TIF monies. So, that is probably the biggest piece of advice I can give to you, other than get started sooner rather than later, and I'll work with Matt to share where we are. Probably just as important is the future staffing and public safety and in public works. We are in a big, big growth era in our community. This year, six positions were not funded in the department head's requests, and that's all across from fire, police, as well as public works. Fire will need at least twelve positions to fill three twenty-four-hour slots. So, every time you hear one position, there are four people behind that. So, just remember, to get a twenty-four-seven operation, it's going to take a lot more. We've been talking about this for twenty years. Bill Stiles was talking about it twenty years ago and said, "We are a community that is getting further and further away from the ability to volunteer for these basically essential services of our community, and we have to have a plan." TIF districts can certainly help you with that and use them to your full advantage. Sewer, we talked about it on several occasions. You have a sewer system where you own thirty percent of the Falmouth Treatment Plant. It's about sixty percent utilized now, and primarily because of infill. You have a great part, portion of the center of town that is not on sewer, but if the sewer passes six houses and only two are connected, we're kind of in a position right now that I have to save capacity for those houses, because what happens if their system fails? Our ordinance requires them to connect. They have no option. They have to connect. What I would challenge you, and I, and it's not going to be, it's not going to be a popular decision, is if those folks want to basically reserve future service, that they pay a ready-to-serv fee. Right now, the only ready-to-serv fees are probably in Contract One and Two of the sewer system, which is primarily around the foreside. So, there are still a lot of sewer users that, that are paying for the system now. We have, I think, about thirteen-hundred users in the system, and about sixty percent of our capacity is taken. I think it was Bailey or Tig that asked me one of our last meetings, "Well, why can't we expand the sewer here or there?" Well, if you figure it out how much infill we have, you're probably at eighty-five to ninety percent. If those folks want to pay for the system, then I'm okay, but if they don't, then we move on and say, "You're going to have to go with probably a thirty or forty-thousand-dollar sewer system in the future versus connecting right into the municipal sewer out your front door." So, a ready-to-serv fee right now is about thirty-eight dollars a month. Everybody in this community that's on sewer pays that, plus what they use for capacity. So, I think that's something you should task to your sewer committee and just say, "Come back with a plan by the end of the year," so we can look at that, too. It would be very timely for the comprehensive plan. Comp Plan would, should look at what we should do with that and give you some direction as well, but it would be good to give them some real data that the Portland Water District can help us with. Yeah, this is all about infrastructure, so, so hang in there. It's almost over. Waterline, this is, this was my biggest going-away present I could actually ever imagine. This, this Portland Water District news a couple of weeks ago just absolutely made my career. We will be working with the Portland Water District over the next couple of years to expand the sewer, the water system from the, basically, fire station on Blackstrap Road all the way to the Falmouth Line. They're working in the opposite direction from a brand-new tank sitting on the top of that brand-new preserve that Wyndham just bought. They bought a piece of property there for sixty thousand dollars. The tank is now under construction and will be able to supply and backfeed all of West Cumberland at the right pressure at, because it's at the right elevation. So, right now, we use a pump station. That pump station is made to basically simulate the water pressure of a tank that sits at well over elevation five-hundred. We are going to be able to do, eliminate the pump station and basically feed We are going to be able to do, eliminate the pump station and basically feed everything back that's being fed through that pump station now. And had we had that water tower, when we lost, um, we lost the water main coming into town on Wind Road for the fifth time, um, that would've been able to backfeed right up Blanchard Road right to the high school. We tried to backfeed from the new valve at mid, the middle road. Um, we only could get up to about twenty pounds of pressure. And the systems they have for those automatic flushes, it needs a lot more pressure than twenty pounds. So it didn't work, and that's why they had to cancel school. If we had this in place, we, we would've had the, uh, school and everything, uh, moving forward. Um, roundabout and the economic, uh, development out in West Cumberland, um, all of this is a huge, huge thing on the horizon. I hope to hear in the next, um, month or so, uh, if that happens, really, really take advantage of it. Get a better vision for the VCC. The VCC should be a, a kind of walkable community almost, where you've got businesses on the ground floor and walk-up apartments, then you can have a great place. The vision for that is over a mile and a half of sidewalk, both sides of Route One, out to the bridge on Blackstrap and up, up, uh, Skilhams Road as well. All of those are things that are gonna be great. Look at something that can help be the catalyst to help you with that business development, like a, almost like a mini West Cumberland Chamber of Commerce or a Business Development District. That can really do wonders. And even if the roundabout doesn't come, still do that, because I believe that this next development that you're gonna see over the next year, um, is gonna start a cap, uh, is gonna start a chain reaction in West Cumberland that is just not gonna stop. So I'm very, very, um, very, very proud of what we've done out there. Uh, protect your capital plan is what I'm gonna tell you right, right out of the gate. Maintain your assets, your buildings, your pave your roads. Do all the things that we've been really working hard at. And then your comp plan, plan that with some purpose, some vision and some inclusion of all the people in this community. Use your IT team so that you can get out messages. You don't have just eighteen people working here for two years. Make it a hundred and eighty. Make it eighteen hundred. You can do that with your, with your video system now. You can do these meetings in a box. You can train your eighteen basically designated comp people, personnel, to go out and basically spread the word to the many. Use your tools. We basically included as part of this, the, um, uh, the survey thing that we showed, that Whitney showed you. A part of that budget is going to be in that comp plan proposal, so you can use that for that. You could also use it for Tiff questions and, and proposed transit ideas and all of those things. Uh, confused, I, I, I really took this one hard, but it's, it's truly on me. Communicate effectively. Uh, no more data fire hoses. So we can't just throw data at people and expect them to understand it. We have a ton of data on our website. We have to basically clean it up and basically box it up in a way that makes more sense to more people. Uh, not everybody has, uh, an, an MBA from the Wharton Business School. We have to get down to the engineers like myself to think that's a good idea, but let's see how it works. And, uh, I, I think that's really one of the big messages I heard during Meet the Candidates Night to a person. Uh, we're concerned about the way we communicate, uh, most of our projects in the community right now. It's just through a lot of reports and data, and it needs something to tie that back together. And I'd encourage you to get back to the Council Corner we used to do several years ago, when the council would talk about an, an important item on our, on our, uh, website in the crier, so that people could plug in and get ready for what's next. And we have so much amazing talent in this community, man. I, I am so blessed to have worked with so many of these committees. I'm just amazed every time, every time I work with them, all the talent they bring to the table, and they care so much about your community. So please, please, make it representative. Make sure you can get some people from every demographic that we represent in this community, cuz it has changed. It has changed for the younger. Uh, we've gotta get the younger folks involved. We also need the people who've been here, so though we don't tread old ground and people can remember why we didn't go up that path for a reason, and explain it, because that's how we build community, not by, not by arguing about who's right and who's wrong, but, you know, what's best for the town of Cumberland. And don't allow your committee on the comp plant to flounder. It gets hard. It really gets hard, especially halfway through it, when people are starting to burn out because of meetings. Be vigilant. Remember how important all this work is, and work with them to get them the tools they need. They're gonna need more tools now than they ever did, and use, use, again, your IT as more than you ever could have imagined, because, uh, we have, uh, two IT people that work with us. Sarah does an amazing job right now with the, the meetings and helps Whitney, and they work very well together. Sean is our backup guy that started cleaning up the system that was absolutely broken. Uh, he has a, a ton of experience as well. So we have the, we have the resources, and I just encourage you to keep doing good stuff, because this has been the most amazing community I've ever worked in. It has been my absolute pleasure to have served you as manager, and I will tell you, um, I'm not going anywhere for a little while anyway, so I'll be back if, if, uh, if you, if you go down the wrong rabbit hole. But you guys are, you've worked so well as a team. I hope that continues in the future. I was so happy to see the people last week sitting at the dais that were here wanting to represent our community. We had every, every age group represented here. Everybody was excited. Everybody had the energy, and everybody wanted to help, and that was so cool. So for me, I think the future is very bright for our community, and tonight, I'd be happy to go back to where we started on the budget, but I think it all ties together fairly well, because it's not just one-dimensional. We're responsible for so much in this community, and you, as leaders of this community, are responsible for an awful, awful lot more than just a budget. It's, it's the direction, it's the drive, and it's the vision that you've created that makes it a lot easier for me and your amazing staff, uh, to do our work every day. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Yeah. Congratulations on hopefully, um, getting through your final budget there. Um, okay, so we've had quite a few budget workshops. We've had finance committee meetings, talking about a lot of these, these issues. I will open it up if there's any final questions vis-à-vis the budget from the council immediately. I will also open it up, uh, to the public, if there are any questions or comments on this budget.
Do you want to do a public comment?
Yes, you may, please. If you don't mind just saying your name and, and where you live, that'd be great.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for your service. My name is Josh Otto. I live at Nineteen Country Charm Road here in Cumberland. Lived there for eighteen years. Had the privilege of volunteering my time for the town council in years past, working with Bill and Penny on the Ocean Access Committee and Chartering Broad Cove Reserve for our town. Um, I'm very proud of what this council has done over the years, and I'm proud to be a Cumberland resident. I come to you tonight with concerns on page two of line number three twenty. It's come to my attention in the last twenty-four hours that the town of Cumberland, um, sometime last year, made a decision regarding the elimination of bulky items pickup. Um, my concern is really threefold on this. Um, the first is, in my professional career, have a lot of experience in negotiating contracts regarding public service, because I'm a leader in the public service. Absolutely, some public services need to be done through contract work. However, um, this decision has been characterized as sort of a vendored out or contracted out, and, um, in my experience, if a vendor presents an impediment to providing a public service to the citizens of the town, then the town then has to reconcile that somehow through the process. And so to sort of just throw hands up and say, "Well, we didn't have any option," that's not my experience in working in public service, and it's certainly not what I've seen in the town of Cumberland prior. So I have a concern about that. Um, the second would be that, concern would be that I think we do need to really call this what it is, which is, is not a contract-out issue. It is a reduction in public service, and that is concerning to me. It is concerning that this reduction in public service occurred, and, and I read the Cumberland Crier regularly. I did not know that this had occurred this summer or last year, um, around June. It seems to be, um, when it was on the agenda, but I did not see it, it discussed as a reduction in public service. Um, once the town found out that the contract vendor would not provide this service, I believe the town council then went from having one decision to two decisions. The first is to accept that, or not accept said vendor contract, and the second is what to do about the loss of this public service. And my concern is, yes, waste is a hassle. It is a waste because it is waste. Nobody wants it. I get that. However, um, we are in a town that made the decision many years ago to eliminate their transfer station. And at the time, and you can go back and read the minutes, keeping bulky item pickup was a key part of that decision. And so to simply now, years later, just hope nobody noticed that this public service was being taken away, and to imply that this is just how it is, this is what the contract is, it implies that other towns around the state don't have bulky item pickup, and they do, including neighboring towns. Many neighboring towns have transfer stations where folks can bring their items. Cumberland has no transfer station and is required, as, uh, Town Manager Shane mentioned, to, their only option now is to bring stuff to Riverside. And part of the reason I missed public comment earlier was because I was actually counting items in all of the piles between my house and here. And the average cost to bring that haul to fill up a truck and bring it down to Riverside was over five hundred dollars. And that's just between here and there. So that's a significant cost twice a year that our town now residents have to absorb. And my concern is that it is an undue burden on folks in our community who have lesser income than others. And that's something, as somebody who's lived in the town the length of time that I have, I've seen erode over time. But when you reduce public service, for whatever the reason, and, and denominators and denominators that are there, when you reduce a public service and then require those citizens to have to pay for said service, that is, it increase in burden on those individuals to live in that town, and it is a loss of service. So I'm concerned about that. And the third is, I really don't remember this decision occurring, so if you, as a town council, feel you did your due diligence to inform the community of this loss of public service, this is my feedback to say, "I missed your communication, and I, I feel that that was not handled as well as it could've been." And moving forward, I would like to see line three twenty increased so that Cumberland can provide its own bulky item service to its residents to make up for that minor contract impediment that occurred last year. That certainly is solvable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I briefly respond to that?
Yes, you may.
Um, so part of the budget, uh, process also reduced almost four hundred thousand dollars in bag revenues, uh, that wasn't, wasn't left in the budget as, uh, neighboring towns did, uh, even though they went to a automated collection. They still are requiring bags, uh, town bags to go in the trash. Um, we, our, our trash is about eighteen, nineteen hundred tons a year. Our recycling is about, uh, eight hundred plus, plus or minus, so we're almost twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred tons a year of trash and recycling. Uh, bulky waste make, uh, is about three hundred tons a year. So it's about ten percent of our total waste stream. Um, there were people that, um, Josh, totally appreciate and respect your, your presentation that argued against your piece, because they felt like they didn't need that service and were subsidizing it for other. We've heard that argument here, at least on three different occasions, by different residents. So I understand it. We did try and sit down with them and express the importance of keeping this in the contract, but neither one of the vendors would budge one iota, other than to say, you know, "We can drop some cans off at the public works." And the issue isn't the cans at the public works, the issue is the transportation to get it to the curb. So many of the residents who would say, "Okay, just give me a curbed, a trash can to dump it into somewhere, I'll deal with it," uh, that's not taking care of everybody. It would have to be an identical service. We went to curbside collection decades ago, more so than most of our neighbors, because we felt that, one, it was the most effective way to get a higher recycling rate, and we've had one of the higher recycling rates from our neighboring towns. And, two, to essentially not operate a transfer station was a cost savings to most of the residents. So I don't see us going back to a transfer station. The closest thing we have right now is probably the brush, brush facility, which is something that's sticking around. It's actually, uh, starting to, um, almost cover some of its costs, too. So for us, I, I knew this was coming, and I expected, so I, I really applaud you for how well you presented the case. I think it is truly about money, and I would tell you that, that was my goal and the council's goal, I think, to basically give up the bag revenues, which were costly, uh, because we felt that this, too, was, you know, a big loss. And I think if you had, if you polled the people, this would be an interesting one, to see, uh, what would you rather give up, bulky waste or your trash bags? I, if they voted privately, not to you or to me in person, I think it'd be very close. So I'm not saying that, uh, people would like to have that come back in, instead of the bags, but I do think there was a balancing act there, and, and we knew this was going to be hard to understand. And I would tell you right now, people are gonna start piling stuff out in November, uh, in the fall, and say, "Hey, what happened?" Uh, it is gonna be a big process to say, "This is, this is not something we're gonna do as a community anymore." I'm not, uh, trying to take the wind out of your sails, but the things, the challenges that this council will have in front of us are gonna be, uh, around staffing, and services are gonna be really difficult to expand, and this, this would be one that, um, I don't see as a, a, a need, but I, as a nice-to-have, and that's my, my opinion. But I respect yours, and I really appreciate the way you presented the case, so. And it also reinforced my poor fire hose communication with data, so, thank you.
Counselor Douglas, did you have something to add?
Yeah, just to back that up a little bit, too, um, for Bill. So the way that the garbage trucks are moving, they're becoming, it's a more automated system, right? So they now have an arm that pick, I'm sure you know this, like picks the trash can. So it just changes the dynamic of how trash pickup happens, and I just want you to know that I empathize with you, because bulky trash pickup is one of my favorite times of year, so it's very devastating to me. However, I recognize kind of where we sit in, you know, the evolution of technology, liability insurance that comes along with doing a bulky item pickup. It all just kind of led us to this point, and I apologize if you feel like the communication wasn't there. I know this was something that we had talked heavily about at our council meeting back in June, um, where I also expressed that I was devastated about this, so thank you very much.
It was also just in terms of the communication, there's a lot going, I mean, we're gonna be here, hopefully not that late, but this is a double-sided agenda item. And so every week, or every two weeks, it's published in the crier, what's gonna be on the agenda. And I believe the negotiation with Casella and the five-year contract was one of those. I can, I saw your email, so I will happily get you the meeting date for that, um, so you can watch it, because it was debated, and it was frustrating, I think, for all of us. I have stuff sitting in my front lawn right now, right? And, um, the, the, the fact that neither one of the bidders, who have the, the infrastructure and the capability to, to handle this, were willing to bid on this service was frustrating. But it left us in a position where the only other option would then be for the town to do it, and I don't even know if those analytics have been run or what the effect on the mil rate would be. I mean, we're talking about a minor increase here. I can't even imagine what the cost would be to the town to, to do that townwide. Um, that's something, obviously, a future council could consider, but it's, it's a lot, and it's frustrating. So I also appreciate your articulate points. I kind of wish you were in the room with us with, uh, Casella. Not sure if it would've helped, but, um, we made the best decision we could at the time, so. Um, Counsel Bill.
Not, not to belabor the subject, but to perhaps add a, a, a alternative. Always gonna bring this up in new business, but I think it's appropriate to bring it up right now. Uh, my neighbor, uh, was, uh, out in her yard, uh, Sunday there, and, uh, stopped, chat with her for a couple of minutes, and she said, "You know, I'm gonna retire, I'm gonna retire this year, and I'm gonna look for something to do." And she said, "I've got an idea." Uh, and she said, "I think we should have a restore. I think we should have a, a, uh, uh, there's another, another word for it."
Thrift store?
A consignment thrift store?
Yes. Uh, she said, "You know, I've, I've noticed, and I, too, have noticed, that a lot of people have put out a lot of stuff on the side of the road that has value to it, and, and we all know that people come and drive around and, and, you know, if you're picking steel or picking aluminum or something like that, you pick up all that stuff."
Fantastic, too, myself, today.
Anyway, so that, uh, what I was gonna bring up at, at new business was that, uh, I think we need to take a look at, uh, saying her, her, uh, purpose for this is to provide funding for the pantry, food pantry. So I think it's, uh, it's an idea that has merit, and we should, uh, at some point play around with it, but, uh, that doesn't apply to everybody who's got trash that isn't worth anything, but, uh, if we do have stuff that's worth some value, we might be able to donate it to the restore and, and, and sell it for a few dollars and, and get it to the pantry.
Well, um, any other comments from the public on the budget before we potentially move to vote? Okay, seeing none, um, I would happily accept a motion.
A council discussion, Mark, you go and wait till after the motion.
We could certainly have council discussion before, if you'd like. Either way is fine. I mean, if we wanna sort it out now, or we wanna, if there's something to discuss. Either way is fine. I mean, if we wanna sort it out now or we wanna, if there's something to discuss.
As we've, first, I wanna thank everybody who worked on the budget. You guys did a great job this year. You really did. And thank you to the town staff. I'm really bothered by us not finding the money or budgeting for at least a couple more EMT positions. And I'm worried, our fire department came in and gave one hell of a good presentation. And unless they weren't telling the truth, which they were, then we've got a problem on our hands and we're not, we're trying to kick the can down the road. And I can't do that. The number one priority in this town for me is public safety. We've gotta, we've gotta protect our residents. I think that we could have looked at this budget, there it is, and we could have found at least $100,000 in cuts, various places through it. I think we could have funded at least a couple of positions and start the process and stop kicking the can. So, I won't be, while I compliment you, I think it's overall a responsible budget. I think that we should have prioritized the additional personnel for our fire department this year and not kick the can down the road. So, I won't be supporting it and that's the reason why. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. Can you let us know where this budget started? At what number? Because we ended at 29 cents.
About 1.2 million over where we landed.
Okay, so we had 1.2 million in additional cuts.
From the original submission.
From the original budget. So that binder was much thicker. And I'm not, I'm saying that, I think we all agree on the EMT side of things here. Like, none of us sit here and listen to the fire department or the EMTs say they need someone or the police department say they need someone and say, we don't believe you or we don't think that's valid. We're trying to be financially responsible right now, given that spreadsheet that the town manager just talked about, that shows what the increase of even a 4% increase on our budget would do. And so by adding additional staff, we're effectively doubling our budget for this year. And so, I personally have concerns with that. I also know there's discussions here about how we can coordinate more closely with other local communities that I think needs to be a larger discussion to be had. But if others have similar thoughts, I just wanted, I just wanted to highlight the fact that there have been a lot of cuts to this budget. And I know the manager's been working behind the scenes on that with department heads for quite some time.
I don't think anybody disagrees with you, Mike. You know, the... I think the next item on the agenda, or actually, it's one after that. The importance of collaboration and working with our surrounding communities with so many different services, municipal services, fire, rescue, public works, police services, harbor master. To me, that's, you know, some of these are just, you know, I can just click them off, do it, do it, do it, because they make so much sense. You know, should we go buy a boat? No. Yamath's got a boat, Falmouth's got a boat, you know? Let's collaborate on harbor master services. Or should be a guile for that matter. I think that the higher level thinking is that the culmination of collaboration with our towns will get us the desired staffing, I think, in a more sustainable manner. And I think we need to, I think we need to have, give that the chance. In spite of the immediate demand, you know, I'm confident that within six months, we're gonna have something that the towns can come back to, to the councils and say, this is a recommendation to, for staffing for... And again, the agenda item that is in front of us is a small piece of a longer vision. I spent 15 years on the school board and couldn't get the discussion to combine services or combine teaching, combine programming with Falmouth and Yamath, with Gray. And we all have to have our little silos and, you know, we've got an international baccalaureate program here that... And we did away with the industrial arts program. So, you know, we look at how those things play out, but it doesn't do anything when you say, I wanna work together with my surrounding communities. That's the basket I wanna throw my eggs at tonight. And I still recognize, you know, the need for the staffing today.
I think, you know, Bob, I go both ways on this, right? It's like, I wanna look long-term, but I also share Mike's concerns with having 180 days of not having full service coverage, right? And then, you know, six months, we have a conversation and what does that mean? We're 180 days away from hiring someone, so we're a year past this point and that's 365 days without having proper coverage for our community. And that concerns me. And I agree that it's a long-term goal. But I also worry that in the interim, we're not making the best decision for the community by providing the public safety that we've been elected to provide for them, if that makes sense. So I go back and forth, you know? Think it's a tough, it's a tough call.
It's difficult. We also have requests from the police for an additional person. And so, you know, we can have one of two things. We can either have a fiscally responsible budget, where I think what's interesting here, when I look at this budget, it's increasing $268,000 from last year, right? $157,000 of that, or 58%, is because of an increase in insurance premiums, right? Which we're actually budgeting for correctly now, right? Which makes sense, based on what we've spent in the past. So that's 58% of that bump is insurance. The other 37% of that bump is fire. We actually increased their budget by $100,000 this year. So, that leaves $10,000 left that we've increased this budget, $10,600. So, that is a very tight budget year over year, apart from fire and apart from insurance that are going up as big, as big-ticket numbers, if you look at those, that don't have the same revenue offset. So, again, we're the body elected to determine this and if folks want to reconsider that, we can reconsider that. But I thought that this was something that was discussed quite significantly at all the different meetings. And I think I share the exact same comments that you raised, too. No one wants to sit up here and say no to someone, but we also have the difficult decision of not... You know, I just spent six months here talking about affordable housing and talking about a lot of other things. And what I heard over and over is, we're already being taxed out of our homes. You go on Facebook, on the Facebook group, it's, we're being taxed out of our homes. And so, at the same time, to have folks come and ask us to increase the budget, which I guess many of us would be happy to do, it's a tough thing to do. So, the budget as it is, is set and I know we've got some differing views. And if folks want to vote in that manner, I guess we can see how the cards lay out. But if there's any other comments from the council, I'd be happy to hear those. Okay, seeing none. Are there any other comments from the public on this?
Steve Sloan, Rain Road. So, thank you, Mike, for what you said. To say that the increases are on the fire department, they have not been funded for 20 years. So of course it's gonna increase. When we're talking about all these other increases in regionalization, regionalization only works when all parties have something to give and something to gain. Yes, Falmouth has 10 people on duty. You know why Falmouth has 10 people on duty? Because that's what they need. What does Cumberland need, right? We can't, the first time that we, that Falmouth sends all their trucks over to Cumberland to cover us because we need to get a certain number of manpower and they have a call for service that's critical, will probably be the last time that happens. Because we're not bringing enough staff to the table to benefit them. It's called mutual aid. We're doing it now, all the time. They need an ambulance, we send an ambulance. They need a fire truck, we try to gather enough people and send them a fire truck. When we can't do that, it is no longer mutual aid. It is relying on another community that's paying for their people to provide us a service. We need to be able to provide some of our own service and then we can collaborate. Regionalization is a long process. Bob, you said, six months, we'll know where we're at. Then you have a six-month, you have to do, the study's gonna take much longer than six months. And then you have an implementation time. You have to strategically plan this out. It's not something that's going to happen overnight. It is gonna take a long time to get this. I'm in favor of regionalization. I'm probably one of the only fire chiefs that you'll talk to that will say, let's do it. Countywide, down south, they do it all the time. But they also have huge numbers to be able to backfill the area and handle second calls. It's not, we're gonna staff one station here and one station there. There's multiple people in the stations. And I would love to see that here. But we also have to think about, how are we going to stay and provide our own service until we get to that point? And that's by adding staff on a strategic basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Kevin Balvin, Longwoods Road. I have a short memory, so I apologize. Counsel Eads, and I can't read your name, I apologize, I don't know your name. You guys, you said you did, you wanna do everything possible to support emergency services, that's a priority. I believe you said you were upset that we couldn't provide those services. Didn't we all just approve $100,000 to buy land?
Which comes out of a very different fund.
It doesn't matter. It's the foundational principles of governance. You are providing land over emergency services, are you not? At the end of the day, it doesn't matter where the money comes from. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter where the money comes from. The principle is still there, right? You're purchasing land over providing emergency services, right? At the end of the day, at the end, when we go to bed at night, we spent $100,000 on land. We did not spend $100,000 on emergency services, right? It doesn't matter where the money comes from, I don't wanna hear it.
Spending $1.4 million on emergency services and fire, this budget, 1.4 million.
Yeah, and we continue that every year and things like that. But again, we say we have a need. We need emergency personnel. Do we need land? And nothing against the land. Land's important, we should have that. But when it comes heads versus tails, we don't need the land. We need people to respond to the land, to save the people that tripped and fell, had a heart attack, had a concussion, something like that. Just don't feel well. Just so we know that. Just so it's clear as day. $100,000 to vote on for land, not...
$1.4 million.
Okay, can you say it all day? But again, the service was not provided by the government entity, which is you. You have discovered that you have a need, you didn't fill it. So my question is, at the end of the day, are we talking about negligence or gross negligence when we discover a need that isn't being met by the government?
Okay. Any further council discussion? Counsel Story King?
Is there any way to use fund balance to add more paramedics or EMTs to the budget?
Short answer is yes. The long answer is that is an extremely slippery slope to go down only because it's taken us 20 years to build it up to a level that we can deal with cash flow and we can deal with paying our bills. Yes, you could. You have the right to do that as a council. But I would just caution you, if you don't have a plan on how to replenish it, it's not the best way to go.
So, my follow-up question is, if you increased, let's say you added two full-time people, we have 146,000 in the budget for overtime and per diem, would that reduce or eliminate... How many people would it take to reduce or eliminate those lines?
I don't think you can really plan adequately when people will be out or sick or injured or hurt. So that is always a weird place to go, except that. I would say at least a third of that would be eliminated with those positions. So it could get reduced by at least 56. I think you'd, you basically would fund about a half a position with, through the savings in overtime.
And then, another follow-up question. So our $1.4 million fire department budget generates $400,000 in revenue. Would we generate more revenue with more paramedics?
Another tricky question, because not everybody has the ability to pay those rescue bills that doesn't have insurance. We accept Medicare rates. We basically have about an 80% payment rate. So there's still, it's not a one-to-one, it depends. That's not, not off the table, but it would eliminate any intercepts that would have to go out to another community. Other communities, when they come and pick up the patients, they do the billing, so we do lose that.
That's why I was asking. So when Jason gave the example of the two calls that we couldn't respond to because we were already responding to a call, that's two lost revenues, potentially, for us.
But, yeah. But remember when we had the intercept program back in 2006 or '07, we started having to bill the communities for those calls because we weren't able to collect the revenue. So, it's a little bit of a slippery slope. And I would not bank that until we actually saw some, some actually real-time data. Because remember, one person, you need, you need eight people to staff another ambulance. It's not two people. I mean, you're basically trying to staff it 24/7 on an eight-day schedule and it basically requires two people to staff it and that represents eventually eight people. We've gotta build, build with a vision and a plan to get to that number. If you, if you had funded any people in this budget, I would try to work with the chief in the department to say, maybe we don't hire them in July, we hire them in January and we hire four people instead of two people. And then we commit that, we're gonna try to do that every year to go, going forward, to try to, you know, meet at the halfway point in the budget to try to build that base up a little bit more. It's not going to be easy. It wasn't easy for Falmouth. Steve talks about 10 people, but that's 40 people that represents. And they struggled to get to that number, too, but they got there a lot quicker than we did.
Do we have a comment?
I wanna briefly talk about revenues. EMS revenues, it weighs pretty heavy on me. My father-in-law passed away a few years back. He basically bled to death in his sleep because he wouldn't call the ambulance for cost of services. We have been a proponent in this town to take care of the people here that can't afford it, to make sure they know, they call the ambulance, we're gonna come get you no matter what. We're not here about cost. We're here for your safety. At the end of the day, I warned my wife I was coming up here to say this. I wanna make sure that never happens to anyone else's family, because I've lived that dream. It's a sad state to be in, to be in a position where you're worried about picking up the phone and dial 911 for cost. Will the second ambulance bring revenue? Yeah. We'll be covering more calls. We'll bring in more revenue. But I still wanna state publicly in front of you guys and on camera to the town that we are here to serve the people. And I don't care if you can pay the bill. I want you to pick up the phone and call 911 if you need help. That's why we're here. And at the end of the day, that's what I'm doing. I don't come to work every day because I needed another job. I run a business here in town. I could survive on just that, but I enjoy serving this town. I enjoy serving the people in this community. It is a blessing and a curse to respond to calls in this town as a full-time employee and look people in the eye that helped raise me and I've watched their kids grow up and have to deal with them at the worst possible times in their life. And I understand the position you guys sit in. You sit every day and you have to make decisions to benefit the town for everyone and a cost that makes sense. But if one person dies on our watch, is it $100,000, is $400,000? It's not a lot of money, but it is. I get it. But if one person survives because we spent $400,000, was it worth it? Tenfold. Tenfold. I sit here and look at faces that I grew up with and I admire and I know this decision weighs tough on all of you, and I do. I get it. But we can't sit with our head in the sand and kick the can down the road any further. When I started in this department in 1990, I did everything I did up here for training for free. We get paid to go to calls, that was it. And I wanna say it was like $6 or $7 an hour. I didn't do it for the money. I did it because I enjoyed being at the fire station. I enjoyed the people that I worked with and I love seeing guys like Officer Eads on the highway. We were a farming community. We were a farming community. I knew every farmer around here, I hanged for 90% of them. The people that lived in this town worked right here. We have become a parking lot for Portland. It's sad to say we're a community that houses people that work in a different city now. We don't work, not everybody here works in town anymore. When I joined the department, there was literally fistfights, you laugh, that's a joke, it wasn't fistfights, but there was people pulling people off the truck, trying to get on the truck, trying to get the good gear that was in the department. We've come a long ways, but making sure we have staffed ambulances is probably one of the most important things in my life. And making sure that I can provide a service to this town that's second to none. So that I can walk home at night and think, I made a difference today. There are days when I leave here and, well, I did the best I could. But there are days like I talked about earlier, where we made a difference. And I hope we can continue to do that for the people of Town of Cumberland. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, I support you in not charging people who can't afford to... That was absolutely one of my criteria when we went to an out-of, out-of-town biller, that that, we send out one reminder, I think, after, one, maybe two reminders, and if they don't pay, we drop it. So, if you are someone who needs an ambulance, call the ambulance.
Counsel Philson.
We've had a lot of meetings on this. We've, you know, cut a lot of funds. This is a really, really hard thing, but it's people's, it's people's lives. I wanna make sure negligence or gross negligence, it's a really important thing to say. And maybe it's frustrating, but personally, I would feel better if we maybe took one more look. I don't know what else to do, I, I know we've had the meetings, I know we've had these discussions, I know that people have been tearing their hair out to figure out where we can cut, but I don't feel like it would be a good faith decision to not take one more look, so that's where I am.
I would agree. I know that's not what everybody wants to hear, but I think, I think we have to. I'm sorry, I don't know.
If, if you're gonna go in that direction, then take it out of contingency, don't take it out of fund balance, 'cause you have reserve accounts that you can move monies around if you choose to do that. It will kinda derail some of your plans, but if this is a higher priority to you, then that would be the direction I'd advise you to go into and, and not take it from fund balance, so...
So what would that look like in terms of timing and how that's funded?
With your motion, with your motion tonight, you can basically look at, pick a number, it's a hundred thousand dollars a person. Tell me how much you wanna take out of contingency, and then you've got a year to figure it out. So if you wanna fund two positions, it'd be...
Two hundred thousand out of contingency.
Two hundred thousand from, from the contingency, contingency, which are the reserve funds that you have set aside projects, but you can also basically move those around and basically delay some of those, some of those projects you have. So, for, for a year, for a year.
Training and gear and all sorts of things, benefits, yeah.
You looking for a job?
Yeah.
There you go.
You don't kill.
No.
So, clearly, and I wanna say I appreciate everyone coming and advocating for the, the wonderful work that you do. We all value it, we all view it as important, there's no question about that, I just wanna make sure that's very clear. It's, there are difficult decisions up here where we're trying to think about all the different voices that we hear and all the emails we get from people about tax burden, right? And so there's that side of it as well, so. Counsel Vale, did you have something you wanted to add there?
If you're, if you're, if the sentiment is to add positions, I think it's only becoming upon us to reexamine the entire fire department's budget as a whole. I don't think we can just say...
Agreed.
We're gonna add, throw 200,000 dollars at this. I'm willing to re, I'm willing to reexamine this, and if you wanna, if you wanna remove the fire department's budget from the budget vote this evening, and hold that to a separate vote at another date while we have another look at this, sit down with the fire chief or the town manager, and reexamine the budget line by line and, and see what, where this comes, you know, and what it may be, or that, that we just add the money, but I'm, I'm not gonna just add the money without looking at the whole fire department budget.
So, Mr. Manager, like structurally, how would that work? Would we be able to vote on the budget as a whole with the exception of the fire budget, which would be separated out? Or would this be a, we approve the budget as written with a desire for 200,000 in contingency funds set aside for potential positions with the review of the department's budget? Or how would that look?
You're not gonna find that kind of money in the department's budget, the majority of theirs, like most of our budgets are, are payroll and benefits, so you're not gonna find, you're not even gonna find $50,000 in the, or $20,000 in that budget, 'cause they were basically held to zero at just about every line item because of the increases. So, my original proposal would stand in that I would basically direct the manager to find monies from the reserve funds, to give the council an extra year to determine how to work on a staffing plan. Because to Steve's point in the back row, the chief of Westbrook, he, he knows that these things don't get done overnight either. And this proposal to go from where we are today, which is essentially funding one ambulance 24/7 to, to the second, is, is also gonna take an evaluation of what we have today presently. Falmouth spent over a year doing an analysis of the department that would probably be the next step, and figuring out how we can do it more efficiently. But in the interim, while we do that, I would tell you right now, two additional people would be a huge help to the department. It would help with burnout, some of these guys work a zillion shifts, I hate to say it, there are 48-hour shifts that are being basically done because we just need the coverage, and they care enough about the community, they don't want it to be understaffed. So, this is, this is no different than what Chief Turcot and Chief Small presented to you. They are concerned, and I think, you know, from a responsibility standpoint, we'll push it from reserves, we'll re, reprioritize some of the funding that you have set aside, and then try to work on a plan that maybe gets us to where we would like to see us, and it's not gonna happen in one year, it really can't. It, it's gonna be a four- or five-year plan that gets us there, and maybe this is step one, and if you're comfortable with that, I'll make it happen, so...
Good. But to Bob's point, I would feel more comfortable with this as well, as part of a larger discussion of where we can collaborate with other neighbors, right? Which takes time, right? That's theoretical at first, you start small, hey, you know, we're buying a truck, you're buying a truck, maybe we buy a truck together, right? We do something like that, but it starts, I mean, that's a big purchase, but starts even smaller than that. But I think, year after year with a budget, these requests will come, because they're needed. And so, I wanna make sure that we're not just funding on one side, but we're thinking holistically about the, 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 the regionalization potential as well. So, if that's the will, I mean, I can count, Counsel Cop, please.
I just wanna make a statement. I'm 62 years old, Shirley, you're a little older than me, and Mike as well, Bob, you're a little older than them. When I was a child...
No offense, Bob.
Wow.
The rest of you are younger than I am.
It's like airing everyone's dirty laundry.
I just wanna make a statement, and Mike and Shirley and Bobby, you'll remember this, Dick Andreessen used to drive the ambulance that was a police cruiser when I was a child. So you folks need to look at the elder seniors in this community and say, 1.4 million dollar budget for the fire department. A lot of them don't get it. I know where you guys are, I see you on the turnpike all the time. I know you're understaffed, this isn't something that'll happen overnight, but you gotta look at where we stand up here. We have to tell 8,400 people what's going on, and out of that 8,400, there's only a handful that realize what you guys do. And most of them are the elder people of this community that you go service. It's a tough slope, and, you know, who would've ever thought that an ambulance would cost $400,000? Back when you used to buy a Fury station wagon for $1,800 and put a red light on the roof of it. So this isn't an easy process, and I know there's a lot of experts in this room that are EMTs and firefighters, and I'm not one of them, but work with us.
I'd also say it's not easy for folks to get up and advocate for what they need all the time, so I appreciate everyone getting up there and doing that. It helps us do our job better. So, you know, counting the cards here a little bit, it seems like this is something where, again, I'm kinda getting back to practically the motion, how that motion would look tonight. It'd be an approval of the budget with a request that the manager also ensure that $200,000 is set aside out of end-of-year transfers?
It could be that, or it could be current town reserves.
Current town reserves, okay. Just trying to frame up that language of that motion for anyone that would like to make one.
Well, and for the new manager to understand where the money's coming from, you'll have to...
He's gonna quit on day one.
This sounds, this sounds like a motion for an English teacher.
Yeah, it does, it sounds like a...
Seems like that's above my pay grade.
I do have just one more addendum to the concern about taxes is, I have, as you have, and you have heard a lot of people concerned about their property taxes, but what I'm also hearing is to have the courage to prioritize what we, what we spend our money on. And I think public safety is an important, especially ambulances and rescue are a priority above many other things, right?
Yep, I, I agree. Okay, so, Mr. Manager, do you have something else?
Yeah, I just think that you just, instead of a period at the end, as recommended by the Finance Committee, but prior to all that, you have a, a motion that basically reads to set the FY '25 general fund expenditure at $14,675,632, and the general fund non-property tax revenues at $8,947 to offset the impact of property taxes, and to set aside $200,000 for additional fire personnel as recommended by the Finance Committee. And then the fir, the next line is the, and furthermore, the TIF budget.
Okay.
So I do think, I, I do think it gives you one year. I'm not sure where that money comes from next year, it may have to be another 200,000 that has to come out of your reserves, which, over the next few years, is gonna be tricky, and again, why it's so important to make sure your TIF budgets are inclusive of any public safety personnel. In the past, the TIF was difficult to get police, it was easier to get firefighter paramedics, because of a lot of the arguments you heard tonight. So, that may be, that may be a path forward for you going into the future.
Shirley?
You want me to read it?
I don't know how to read, so...
Well, that was gonna be my question about TIF, like, can we maximize that more? But that's for the next budget year. Okay. I moved to set the municipal fiscal year 2025 general fund expenditure budget at $14,675,632, and the general fund non-property tax revenue budget at $8,947 to offset the impact of property taxes as recommended by the Finance Committee, and to set aside an additional $200,000 toward the hiring of additional...
Fire personnel.
EMS staff.
Perfect.
Yep.
And furthermore...
And furthermore, yeah, the second part of the motion.
And furthermore, I authorize $3,734,900, $734,925 of tax increment financing funds to be used as presented in the fiscal year 2025 budget as recommended by the TIF and Finance Committee.
Second.
That's the easy job. Any further discussion on the motion or the second? Seeing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor. Unanimous. Well done, and thank you again, everyone, for coming.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would ask that you take the next item out of order and replace it with the one after that while we have fire department personnel here.
I would be happy to do that, I think that makes sense.
Thank you.
So we will move item 24-046 up one, and we'll, and discuss that now. So the next item on the agenda is to endorse a joint proclamation with the Town of Falmouth for the exploration of collaboration of future shared municipal services. This is something that came into our packets, the draft language this week. I think for some of us, it was a surprise as to where it came from, but I, I do recall either Counsel Vale or others during Finance Committee meetings tasking the manager to put together some type of proclamation language so we can actually start discussions with our neighbors on what shared services might look like, what staffing personnel looks like, what equipment looked like, basically doing an inventory like we just talked about, and figuring out where there may be collaboration in the future. Because right now, I think it's just not on paper, it's not, you know, it's happening one-off with a cup of coffee every once in a while, but I think what I would like to see happen is the Town of Cumberland's fire department start meeting regularly, the town manager from Falmouth, the town manager from Cumberland, with the fire chiefs and related personnel to start having those discussions in a more formal manner. So I think that's really what this document tries to do, is just to start that process. But I will open it up to the council if there's questions about the language or anything else. Counsel Vale.
I would be happy to read the, the resolution in a minute, but I think it, more importantly, is a, a broad-based opinion, that may be shared by myself only. To me, this is the first step in a multi-process, multi-year endeavor. One of the things that I've strived to do while I've been on a council, while I was on a school board, was collaboration with other communities, because it was my only way to really get a handle on, you know, what, what we should be doing. I'm on the County Finance Committee, and one of the things that I've pushed the county manager for is that, you know, if you want an increase in budget, show me an increase in services to the surrounding communities. What are you doing better? What are you doing that's collaboratively to justify the extra costs in, in, in your budget? And so, the, the conversation has happened at the county level also about how to perhaps regionalize the fire departments, where, where police services can be expanded or, or better added. They talked about, they wanted a, a police investigator with technical background, the city of Portland has one, Bangor has one, a few other communities, the Sheriff's Department wanted one. They didn't get that position, the, the county manager said was not in the budget this year. This is a, an opportunity for the two towns, and, and this is a, to me, it's a landmark moment where we actually have willing counselors from two communities willing to sit down and say, what is it that we can do? Are there areas that we can share responsibilities? Is there areas where we can share training, where is we can share vehicles, equipment? And so, this is a starting point for me. I, I, I sometimes look further down the road, and my, my vision is, is that this is the starting point, that we will talk about public safety, we will talk about municipal services, public works, recreation, police department, and we will stop with just the Town of Falmouth. We will reach out, and we will reach out to our friends in, in Gray, and in Yarmouth, and in North Yarmouth, because it's, there is limited amounts of dollars to be spent. This is a changing world around us, the technology of firefighting, the technology of most anything that we deal with today is not the same as it was 25 years ago, and it's, it's, it's becoming upon us, if we're gonna say that we are making the best use of our taxpayer dollars, that we, we reach out and we say, how can we work with other communities and, and spend that dollar to the best advantage to us? So, when we get done, I'll be happy to read the proclamation, and we can move on.
Counsel Philson, please.
One of the things that we heard tonight was communicate...
Um, one of the things that we heard tonight was communicate effectively, and I think that's really important. And, um, I don't know what I don't know. And this resolution, um, it, have the fire chiefs of both towns been involved in this?
Uh, not to date.
Not to date. Um, so for me, I think that this resolution were very nicely written. I think that we're not, or, or I personally don't feel as though, like, the strategy and the operations have had the opportunity to come together. And I would like an opportunity to, we, we haven't sat down, or I haven't sat down with, um, the folks in Falmouth. Um, you know, we typically go through that exercise of making sure that we're bridging the gap between strategy and operations before signing anything, you know? We met earlier on the Finance Committee about looking at an easement, uh, for a, a private road to make it kind of, uh, have a, have a public easement. And before we did that, we consulted Public Works. So for me personally, before we jump into anything with Falmouth, I think that a meeting would be appropriate. I think consulting the fire chiefs from both towns would be appropriate. Um, and I would like the opportunity to ask questions. And so, um, this is not me being against regionalization, or against shared services, or mutual aid. It's, I would like more tools and data points so that I can have a perspective as to whether or not this is something that will strategically and operationally benefit both communities. And I don't feel as though, at this point, I have that information. So that's just where I am on this.
Any other comments? I, I would add, uh, Council Philson, that I shared those exact same views. I think you and I spoke last week with, when this first came out, the language came out. I think there was an initial thought of, we're getting the cart before the horse. The more I've had time to sit and look at this, I think what this is asking us to do is to start that process. So to Council Philson's point, Mr. Manager, I personally would feel more comfortable if anything that was authorizing the town managers to get together would add the language, "I authorize the town managers, fire chiefs, and their designees from both towns to be part of those communications." Because I'm envisioning what that talk would look like. We would sit down with our, with our, with our chief and say, "We're looking for opportunities for you to communicate with the chief and the manager in Falmouth to find overlap, to find synergies where we can work together." And either they will say, "Yes, we support those conversations," which is great, which we would want them to be part of, or they say, "No," and that's a separate and concerning topic to me. So to me, I feel like getting them included, this is the first step as to, it almost sounds like setting up this meeting, right? Getting together, talking about current staffing, call volume, response times, equipment, and buildings of both towns, projecting what future immediate and long-term needs would be, and developing options for how both towns could work together to meet individual town needs, and then to create a report. So I don't see anything in this binding the town to do anything, binding a police chief to do anything apart from sitting down and meeting with the police chief and the town manager from Falmouth. So I've actually gone from not necessarily wanting to support this, but I would feel much more comfortable if this had, including specifically, the fire chiefs and their designees, um, personally, in the, in the authorization language.
Since you're adding people to the process?
Yeah.
What about a town council representative from each town? They're the ones where the fiduciary buck stops, right?
I think there should be a large group of people in those meetings.
Yeah.
Personally, the more the merrier. But I think we start the process of getting a meeting, and going through this process where the town managers come with the data in terms of staffing and call volume and response times, where we can start talking about it.
But to Tig's point, because I'm going back and forth here, and I'm looking forward to hearing from the public. To Tig's point, would it make sense to workshop this with the chief, and maybe the assistant chief, and see where this is comfortable for them and where it gives them pause before we...
Well, I guess where I'm struggling is, wouldn't that be what we're asking them to do? To come together, to workshop this, to share information, and to have a report? Because otherwise, it's like we're workshopping to potentially workshop.
See, I'm going back and forth, so...
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, play it out for me differently, because all, look at the requests here. It's identify current staffing, call volume, I've read through this. I, I don't understand what the alarm bells are for this, apart from getting folks together.
Well, that's what Tig said. We, we don't know what we don't know.
But unless they're in the meeting with us, how would we know that?
I think that, if I may, uh, we workshop all the time. We go through those exercises. In my opinion, it's the responsible thing to sit down with the fire chief, with the new town manager, with the deputy chief, um, and have, I don't feel like I've had the opportunity. It looks like here Falmouth is designing two significant constructions and additional projects. And, I mean, for me, there's just a million questions. What about the unions? What, what are all of these things that I don't know about? And I want to be able to ask those questions, understand what our priorities are, and then so that we go in to this meeting with Falmouth, understanding where we are, and then having the opportunity to learn where they are, and then identify those based on shared priorities and what's possible versus putting something together that we haven't had that operational know-how from the chiefs to, to contribute to this document. It just, it, it doesn't seem like the cadence is, um, for me, responsible.
So what would preclude us from having a workshop and entering into this agreement? Because this agreement is just basically saying identifying current staffing and talking about how the two towns can work together. And if that's a problem for the police chiefs or anybody else to get together, then to me, that's a separate question of why. I guess it's, if the, if the council wants to, again, we talked about kicking the can down the road. If we want to set up a meeting, and then another meeting, and then another meeting to effectively have a meeting, then we can do that. But it just strikes me as, um, delaying the process that's been delayed for a while. So, but open to other discussions here. There's no skin off my back. I mean, it's, it's really, uh, you know, if we feel like we need to do this as a draft, or we feel like we want to do this in some other fashion, we can do it that way. I just didn't see anything in this that binds us to anything apart from discussing and sharing information.
Mark, I'd like to read the resolution, uh, so that the public may, or be aware of what we are actually... This is a joint town council resolution. Whereas the Town of Falmouth and the Town of Cumberland's fire EMS department have worked collaboratively for many years with varying levels of service, including mutual aid agreements, shared equipment, regional ambulance service, and more. And whereas the Town of Falmouth has recently transitioned to a predominantly full-time department, and whereas the Town of Cumberland is projecting the need to hire more full-time staffing, and whereas the, both the Town of Cumberland and the Town of Falmouth have experienced an increase in calls for service to all hazard incidents, and whereas both the Town of Cumberland and Town of Falmouth have experienced a decline in the number of available call company staff, and the Town of Falmouth conducted a report in 2019 that identified optimal staffing at 13 people on duty 24 hours a day. Said report recommended three phases of full-time staff transition, and two phases have been implemented, current staffing at eight to 10 people per shift. And whereas the Town of Falmouth is planning and designing two significant station constructions and addition projects, and whereas the Town of Falmouth and the Town of Cumberland would benefit from a value, from an evaluation of fire and EMS service options to enhance current regional collaboration. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town councils of the Town of Cumberland, of Falmouth, and Cumberland residents, the Towns of Falmouth and Cumberland, assemble this 13th day of May, 2024, that the town councils authorize the town managers and their designees to work collaboratively with officials from both towns to evaluate and report back to the town councils the following. Identify current staffing, call volume, response times, equipment, and buildings for both towns. Two, project future immediate and long-term needs. Develop options for how both towns could work together to meet individual town needs and the benefits and costs of each option. Complete the evaluation and report back to both towns by December 31st, 2024.
Yes, Council Philson.
Has Falmouth signed off on this?
I think they're meeting tonight.
They are.
It may be already happened, I'm not sure.
Okay. Do we want to open this to public comment?
We certainly can, sure.
Steve Sloan, Rain dro. So I'm not opposed to, uh, this proclamation. What I think needs to happen before that is said right in the proclamation. Falmouth did a study in 2019 to said what their community needed. What does Cumberland's community need? What, do we have an organizational study? Do we have a staffing plan? How are we going to be compliant with the NFPA standards? We know none of that, because we haven't brought anybody in to do a study. So as much as I think that it's great that the, the chiefs and the council get together, what's going to be accomplished? We don't know what the need is. We need to identify the need before we can fix and come up with a solution. So that's all I would recommend is to put, pump the brakes on that. Do your organizational study of feasibility on what needs to happen in the town? What is the actual staffing needs? Do you need all the fire trucks that you have? And hire somebody that's a professional to do that strategic plan and organizational study. That way, you'll know when you sit down to discuss that Falmouth's got this, Cumberland can offer this. So that's how you combine services and share services, is once you know what you need, and you can get to where we need to be over here, then we can share that. But right now, we really don't have anything to share. And to the point, the chiefs do meet on a regular basis, they meet on a monthly basis, they meet on a quarterly basis. And this is all stuff that is talked about in those meetings.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Cotton.
I just have a question. Who better knows the needs than the chiefs of the departments? If they don't know the needs of their own department, something's wrong.
They do know the needs, but having somebody come in that's independent to evaluate it is a lot easier to sell that says, because they can look at all the facets. If you're looking at regionalization, are the stations in the right location? What is the response time from the central station to the west, uh, to the foreside? Does that meet the criteria? What's the response time from central to the west station, or central to the West Cumberland? Is West Cumberland station in a good location? Could it be moved to enhance services? That's what these studies do, and that's what they're, they're professionals at. Because there's a whole bunch of, uh, standards out there, NFPA 1720, that if I can, I can spout standards at you all day, but it says what the minimum and maximum response times are. And that's what this study would look at. Do you need another station? Do you need to add one down at the foreside that you could share with Falmouth? Can you move the station in West Cumberland a little closer to the Falmouth line and service both communities? That's what a study would do.
And to my point, I guess Chief Small should know the answer to that. And obviously, I don't want to move the West Cumberland station because we just argued over $200,000, not $2 million. So I, I know where you're coming from, there's experts and everything. I don't care what you do, there's an expert for everything in the world. But there's some common sense for everything in the world as well, so... And I think, uh, chiefs have got some common sense, so that's what I'm getting at.
I think, I think we're on to his point. I agree, the chief small knows, but sometimes I think it's helpful, and I know you know this, but just to get that outside perspective right. Sometimes when you sit so close to something, it's hard, it's hard to see the full picture in a different way, and, and I think there's some value in that. Yeah.
I don't want to be offensive, right? You're saying the chiefs know best. Chief Small asked for four positions. And he didn't get any of them till tonight.
Kevin Balvin, Longwoods Road. All right. I got a couple, bunch left around, written down, so I'll be a little scatterbrained. But data, where's the data? Where was the data that was sourced to make this decision with Falmouth? Why is Falmouth the best decision?
We're trying to get the data, that's what point one of the authorization is.
So we're, we're getting into a memorandum with another municipality to figure out the data? Why not North Yarmouth? Why not Yarmouth?
It could certainly, it could certainly at some point...
No, no, I understand that, but I'm asking the question, why Falmouth? Why was Falmouth chosen?
The largest common property line of any community that surrounds us.
Okay, all right. North Yarmouth has a property line that has with us?
At the longest.
Right, not the longest, no, no, definitely not.
By any...
But they're the most likely with our services, right? Falmouth has a lot different target hazards that Cumberland does. The chief knows this, he's absolutely right, knowing the target hazard that he has. But also too, what are the regional hazards, right? When we need more staffing, like Steve said, are we just going to put these staffing where they go in the stations? Or is there a better spot? Is there satellite stations that could be better built as a regional structure? Like Gorham and Scarborough. They had, North Scarborough Station was a shared station for the longest time. I think it still is, unless something happened. Gorham and Wyndham had a shared station. Uh, Revere and Saugus, they have a shared station. Why aren't we looking into different things? Why don't we have the data that points us in the right direction? Looking that way is a lot more like us than looking towards the city. Falmouth is going to continue to grow. Falmouth's going to continue to be more of a Portland. We need to focus on our neighbors this way that are more like us. So data, we need the data. What call volume do we need? What call types do we need? What, what's our response plan on services? The crew just went out on a, uh, smoke investigation on the highway. The response was gray heavy rescue, a fire truck, Cumberland engine, a fire truck, and an ambulance that had our only paramedic on duty in the town going on the highway in West Cumberland. Is that the best use of our resources? That should be included into the study that needs to be done. Not saying that Dan doesn't know everything, but maybe a fresh set of eyes. Why is that asset being allocated that way? When was the last time you rechecked your response plans? These things need to be updated. What's the staffing levels of our communities? Where's our mutual aid coming? So again, you, you do respond differently for said emergencies. An abdominal pain? You may not get a paramedic. There's many services around this country going back to the old squads, 58 days. You're going to get a fire truck when you call the ambulance, and they're going to say, "Okay, you need a BLS transport, or you need an ALS transport." Different models work around this country. Regionalizing fire department. Bob, when was the last time you asked about regionalizing library system in Cumberland, Falmouth, and, uh, greater Portland area? Why can't we start regionalizing our non-emergent life safety departments? Before we mess around with that, right? Maybe we can make some regionalization in our library administration, different things like that. Again, I'm not saying we have to, but why are we focused on the fire EMS before we're focused on non-incidental things, right? Um, like you said, look in the wrong way, focus on your target hazards, and look into a regional system. The sheriff's office, right? One, one municipality buys the car, one municipality pays the salary, different things like that. Again, maybe not Cumberland County, but all across this nation. Look across this nation, just like we did with that captain. Fantastic hire with that Iowa captain. Bringing fresh ideas from across this nation that we haven't seen in New England. New England is a very, this is the way we've done it forever in the fire service. Am I right? So look outside for ideas. So, good job on the budget.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my name's Andrew, resident of Cumberland. Was there ever a study done when they built the new fire station right here on Tuttle Road? Was there any, like...
Yes, there was a committee that met over a year.
No, is there like, like the information that you guys are all looking for? Is there any, like, uh, feedback, um, that can, you can be provided and added to this conversation? That's all I have.
I think that's been my point, that part of this work with Falmouth is going to basically be pretty clear that we're going to be doing more internal reflection. I think Chief Turcot and Chief Small have both already started that, and are starting to gather data and gather information that would be needed. But you're going to be asking the community to look at, you know, potentially 1.5 to 1 point, uh, 1.2 to 1.5 million dollars more, which by itself will add $1 to the tax rate all by itself. Not saying it's not needed, but how we do it is important. We can't just, we can't just hit the, uh, you know, the mosquito with a machine gun. We have to be careful, and we have to do it slowly and deliberately. I think honestly, the work with Falmouth will further kind of put that spotlight on us, because that work is needed, uh, I, their, their willingness become, comes, to help us comes out of a relationship that we have with most of our departments with Falmouth. So, uh, they have always been somebody that we could call and help, and that will continue with the next manager. Uh, the managers have a great relationship, that will continue, and hopefully spread to the councils. But remember, it's one step at a time. There's no, there's no urgency to get this done tonight. If, if you're not comfortable with it, I would rather see a more uniform unanimous vote than a split vote, because we're not ready to go there. We will get... because we're not ready to go there. We will get there eventually. Eventually, we're going to have to do something. So for me, if, if this does nothing but it kind of opens a door and you want to workshop it to get into the details of it, let's do it next council meeting or, you know, we, the next council meeting is scheduled for Memorial Day. We won't do it then. Maybe we can schedule a workshop that week and just kind of kick this around as, as a one item thing and then get back to, get back to Falmouth with it. I think it's important that we start the process. I think if we don't start the process, then we're not about regionalization. And I don't think anybody is saying that. I think, I think we have an opportunity to look at this. And to some of the points raised tonight, it may turn out that, you know, Falmouth might not be the right dance partner, but we've got the right data in place to know what, what the next dance partner looks like. So I'm happy, I've talked to Nathan already and said, I don't think we'll have any action on this item tonight. So I think they would like to, to move forward because they too are struggling to find somebody to work with. And everybody is kind of just, kind of marching in place right now.
Well said, Bill.
I would move to table it.
I guess I just don't want to see the process go by the wayside. I want to keep things moving. I mean, so.
Yes, please.
Jason Cobb, West Cumberland, again. Uh, I've been here thirty-four years. We've kicked this can around a million times. I think it's a productive idea. But the only way I think it moves forward is if we use all our available avenues. We need to have the fire chiefs, the unions, the deputy chiefs, the town managers, council, and public involved in this. Because it's a topic that's not going to go away. This is a cost. I, I understand that one hundred percent. But we have to look at this from a constructive point and sit back and the topics they talked about, about station location. Yeah, I don't see us wanting to move a fire station either. I can't see that being cost effective. But if they're going to build a new station and we can place that station with a study that shows the best possible location for us to share that station, it makes sense. But I don't think we can do this moving forward. A month ago, the chief stood down here with this very topic. This is the thing they had on the slides up here. I brought it with me just to give me some reminders if I needed them. We have some really talented people sitting up to the street that have a lot of insight in this. We have very talented people sitting up behind the diocese right now, and we have some talented people that work for the town of Cumberland. And I think if we sit down and collaborate with Falmouth, I think we can come up with a product that works. But we may have to make sure that everybody's involved, and we move forward in a transparent, positive manner that only benefits both communities, if that's the direction we're headed. That's all I got.
Thank you. So what is the will of the council here?
You have a motion, you have a motion from Councilor Filson to table the item.
Oh, from Bailey Douglas.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bailey.
Yeah, before we vote, Mark, um, you made a good point tonight about kicking the can down the road, and I hope we don't kick this can too far down the road. Bob, you, you, you're on the right thing about consolidation and looking into. You are. I just, and, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers to look at all the options. If we don't, we're, I mean, shame on us. So I'm with you on this. I just, um, I'd, I'd like to see the, I'd like to see the chiefs and stuff get together first and then us, and I don't, I don't want, I don't want this to six months down the road, a year down the road. I'd like to, I'd like to tackle this soon after the, the new council's in place. But thank you, Bob, for your, your efforts in this.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilor Douglas to table this?
Second.
Okay. That ends discussion and debate. All those in favor of tabling? Okay, we have five in favor. All those opposed. Two. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing.
Yep.
Is there a chance we could bring it up during the week of Memorial Day if we send dates out if people are available? It'd just be nice to give Falmouth some ideas.
We'll make it happen.
Okay, um, we've been going for about three hours and fifteen minutes straight here.
Four hours.
Four hours and fifteen minutes straight. And so I would like to, very quickly, before maybe taking a five-minute recess, um, would be to address the, the medical marijuana licenses. We've got folks who have been sitting here waiting for quite some time. There's four of them that if possible, if we could group them together, unless there's any major objections here, I think that makes a lot of sense, just to kind of move through those items. So I guess I can tee those up a little bit. These are renewal licenses from all of the locations. The code enforcement officer has visited every single one of these locations, and those are, uh, I don't know if I need to read the agenda items. I certainly can. Twenty-four.
As red, Mr. Chairman. How's that?
How's that? Okay. Twen, this would be just agenda items, twenty-four dash zero four seven, twenty-four dash zero four eight, twenty-four dash zero four nine, and twenty-four dash zero five zero. Again, those are all holding public hearings to consider an act on medical marijuana registered caregiver license renewals for various businesses in town on Gray Road and on Lower Methodist Road. The, the code enforcement officer has visited all these locations. All of these locations have passed effectively with flying colors, um, with no complaints being issued within the last year, and the code enforcement officer recommends renewal of these licenses. So maybe we could, um, address those collectively unless there's a particular one we need to pull out separately.
I have, I have no problem with that, Mark. The only thing that I would like to bring out is on each application, I would deem it incomplete. Property owner and description, physical address, nobody put the town that they actually live in. Two twenty-five, two twenty-two Gray Road on the first application. Lower Methodist Road, I'd like to see, you know, before the licenses are issued, fill in the rest of it Cumberland. And I think one of them was, was at a gray address, but all of them were incomplete.
Two twenty-two Gray Road.
Uh, here's one that says two twelve Gray Road. I'm not sure what town that is, Falmouth, Cumberland, or Gray.
I think those are the addresses of the businesses.
In Cumberland, yeah, but I think to Bob's.
Well, and actually, the mailing address, so it, it's.
I know where you're coming from, but I think they're using the business address.
Just a, a, a housekeeping.
Okay.
That was the only thing that I noticed on all of them.
Any other questions or comments on the applications apart from filling in the complete town zip code for each line?
I'd just like to remind the public that if you have an issue or complaint, that you need to bring them to us because if you're a neighbor and you have constant complaints, but we don't know about them, we can't address them. And in general, the complaint would go to the code enforcement officer, and, you know, so you don't even have to like register with the police or anything. You could just chat with the code enforcement officer.
I would happily accept a motion if someone.
Mr. Chairman, I will give you a motion. I move to approve the medical marijuana registered caregivers license for Evergreen Cannabis, Andrew Pettingill at twenty-two Gray Road. For Evergreen Cannabis, Kristen Pettingill located at ninety-three Lower Methodist Road. For SSJA slash LLC, Jacob Akerson located at two twelve Gray Road. And for Creme de la Creme, Robert Thibodeau located at two ten Gray Road.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Um, I guess I should probably open this up for public discussion before we vote on this. Um, any comments from the public on this before we vote? Okay, seeing none. Any comments from the council on the motion and the second? Okay, seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, unanimous.
Now that you've sat here for three hours.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and then I would like to take a five-minute recess and come back and finish the rest of the agenda, which we can hopefully do very briefly, but, so we'll reconvene in five minutes. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We are now back from a five-minute little recess there to pick up where we left off. I think, um, Councilor Story King reminded me that we need to start back at twenty-four dash zero four five, which we skipped over. Um, this is to authorize the town manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the towns of Chabig Island and Yarmouth to share radio equipment. Mr. Manager, I don't know if you want to give a brief background on this.
Very brief.
Obviously, you do?
Very brief. Just, I, I think the, uh, police chief has been, uh, carrying the lead on this. This is for redoing a equipment shed on Chabig Island at both Yarmouth, Cumberland, and Chabig Island will be using for their radio transmission equipment. Uh, this has been funded through the budget you approved tonight through the use of TIF dollars as part of our, uh, radio project. So, um, this, this piece is just an MOU on how we agree to share costs and how we, uh, agree to move forward with replacement and, uh, working together on, uh, getting this built.
Okay, and it looked like from the agreement, um, the only major costs to the town were, uh, the construction of the shed. And this, it didn't look like we were paying a monthly amount to them.
Uh, no, we will.
Taxes that would need to be paid.
Right, but we'll be worry, working with them on, uh, basically setting up a reserve fund so that we'll have, each, each town will contribute to the reserve fund to basically, um, make sure that it needs to be, if it needs to be replaced, it gets replaced. This has also sensitivity to, uh, heat and cold weather, so it has to have a heat pump inside of it. It's a small building, so it's not going to take a lot of energy, but at the same time, um, it does require a climate-controlled system for the radio systems.
Okay. I did not see anything in this agreement that allowed for either party to terminate it. And I know it's a fifty-year lease, which kind of gave me pause. I mean, I think it's a great idea, right? We're cutting costs. We're sharing. This is a perfect example of regionalization.
Right.
Um, do we have any concern about that or inserting that provision where both parts?
From Cumberland or, or Yarmouth, uh, we both need that tower on Chabig Island because of the coverage up to the ridge that goes across, uh, basically from Middle Road up all the way across Yarmouth. Uh, it's a really difficult ridge to get over, and the only way we can communicate, uh, with our radios is from the island. So I don't see Yarmouth walking away or Cumberland unless, uh, the pop, you know, we grow a hundred feet along the coastline, so I just.
I just feel, I just feel like for ourselves, it might be good to have that language inserted at some point, just to, I don't know. Because otherwise, we're entering into a, a contract in perpetuity, and it just kind of concerns me a little bit. It's fifty years.
So what would, what would you like to add to that?
It, something to the effect of termination. Either party may terminate this agreement with six months written notice and signatures from the council of either side or something where the council agrees to get out of that agreement. I just don't know what could potentially happen in the next fifty years. And there could be something. I'm not envisioning anything, but it just felt that struck out to me as not being included.
I'll, I'll share that, uh, well, this is the interesting one. Uh, we agreed to use, um, a different attorney because two of us are represented by Jensen Baird, not Yarmouth. They're represented by Bernstein.
Correct.
So I will, um, I'll reach out to, uh, both managers and see if we could basically put some terminal, termination language in there.
You've got severability, but.
Severability is dealing with, yeah, the provision, if a particular provision is deemed in violation of the law, that provision will be cut out from the agreement, but the rest of the agreement stands. Um, again, not, not.
I think six months is kind of short notice, though. I'd go for a year.
Sure. I mean, it could just, just something. I just felt like there needs to be some type of.
Get out of jail.
Wave for parties to get out of an agreement if it's not serving them. Um, but this strikes me as a very good agreement overall, so.
So are you tabling this?
I don't think we need to table it. I think we could authorize the manager to move forward with the agreement, pending, um, any additional language that could be added regarding.
I think it's just an oversight. I think most of us think, um.
I think almost every lease agreement you enter into has some type of cancellation or termination provision. Councilor Story King.
I move to authorize the town manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the towns of Chabig Island and Yarmouth to share radio equipment.
Second, but open and close a public hearing.
Perfect. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Public hearing has been closed due to lack of public. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we are now moving to, um, let's see, we're actually on the back page.
Rachel's.
To hold a pub, uh, item twenty-four dash zero five one, to hold a public hearing to consider an act on a liquor license renewal for Rachel's on the Green from June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four to June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. They are quick.
Again, there was a item, uh, address that wasn't complete on the application.
Bob, I don't have it in front of me, but is it, is, does it just say street address, and that's maybe why it's incomplete? Should it say like, should the verbiage on the forms be updated to? Street, city, slash city, slash state, slash city?
I think it says physical location, and it just says 60 Valhalla Road.
Got it.
Yeah.
Maybe we should...
Say complete physical address.
It's 60 Valhalla Road.
Cumberland Center, Maine.
Yeah, you just...
We know where they live.
I know. I think we can gather it, but maybe in the future, just to resolve that issue, it's a little clearer. But we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on that? Public comment is closed due to lack of public again. Any other comments?
None.
Okay, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor unanimous. Thank you. Next item is 24-052, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on approval of annual Victual, Victualers license, I don't know how to pronounce that, licenses for nonprofit organizations for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. And this is, these are the various nonprofits in our community that apply for a, I believe it's a short-term hauling license. Is that effectively what this is? The ability to move...
No, this is for food typically during the fair.
Excuse me, yep.
Or hauling a boat if you want to, but usually it's for food.
Okay. For nonprofit organizations for a one-year period, July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. And these are the Cumberland North Yarmouth Lions Club, the Suburban Little League, West Cumberland United Methodist Church, 4H, our very own Bill Stiles, Tuttle Road Methodist Church, non, or North Yarmouth Congregational Church. Any, I think this is a pretty standard thing that we go through as a council. Any questions on that?
You want a motion?
I would love one.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the annual Victualers license for nonprofit organizations for the period of July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on those motions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 24-053, to adopt a new flood plan, floodplain management ordinance as required by the State of Maine Floodplain Management Office and FEMA. So this was something, if you all recall, I think two weeks ago, our code enforcement officer, Bill Longley, came in to talk to us about the floodplain maps that are being updated. I think the last time these were updated was in the 80s, so now they have a lot more satellite imagery available. Doesn't strike me as there being a lot of change to the town of Cumberland, just given the fact that the four side and other areas have quite a bit of a elevation rise from where the water is up to the land where the houses are. But it is an update nonetheless, but it also strikes me as something that we need to adopt in order to obtain flood insurance coverage...
Correct.
...for our community. So I don't know if there's any...
I think the real, the only real changes in this update are on page 26, the redlined items. So we've gone, gone through all of these for these...
I'll make a motion for your mark whenever, you ready?
Yep, and I'm just looking really quickly at page 26. There are some redlined items, yep, they were pretty...
Added some zones to the floodplain, A, AO, and AH.
Okay. Again, I feel relying a little bit on our code enforcement officer, talking about what he's reviewed and what differences he sees and...
Yep.
I think this is kind of one of those things where you're asked to adopt those, those changes from both the federal and state level.
Correct.
So I would happily accept a motion unless others have specific issues or questions with this recommendation.
I'll give you a motion. I move to adopt a new floodplain management ordinance as required by the State of Maine Floodplain Management Office and FEMA effective June 20, 2024.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor unanimous. Thank you. The last three items, if folks are able or would like, these are all just to set a public hearing date. This is 24-055, 24...
No, we have a mass gathering.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm one off, I'm one off. I apologize. This next item is 24-054, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on approval of mass gathering town events to be held at Twinbrook Recreation Center. This was put together, a memo from our, I guess from Jen Doten, our town clerk, with the various mass gathering applications that are going to be held at Twinbrook this summer. So that's the youth cross-country program, spring and fall league championships, as well as the Twedsbrook Community Picnics from 5 to 8 p.m. There's three of those this summer, one in June, one in July, and one in August, as well as the middle school cross-country fall league championship meet, which is going to be held in October. There will be, very timely, EMTs on site for these events. Police are not scheduled to be at the events, but are aware of the dates and the times. So I think this was just a goal as opposed to getting these one by one over the course of the next several months, to just do them all at once and approve them so that the organizations can kind of plan and move forward there.
I think we've already approved some.
Okay.
From the rec, if I remember.
We did it at the rec level, yeah.
At the rec level?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, again, these applications seem to be completed. Are those signed by Pete Bingham?
These are all town-sponsored events.
Yep, okay.
There have been others that we approved, I think in February Pete said.
Give you a motion.
Okay. Please.
Oh, okay. I move to approve, I move to approve the mass gathering town events to be held at Twinbrook Recreation Area.
Second. It's getting late here.
Sorry about that.
She just nodded off.
I don't know why that was such a funny motion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
I just have a, a related unrelated thing. We had an issue pop up with food trucks being used at the...
Oh, I saw that, yeah.
Mm, I saw that.
...thing this weekend, and I think what you're going to see from recreation, hopefully, or recreation in conjunction with ordinance, some changes to the rules because the Twinbrook rules only, they allow booster groups, and then if the booster groups don't want to do it, it has to be offered to the Lions Club, the way that it's written. And it doesn't seem like any of those organizations are interested in sort of that level of fundraising. So I think recreation and/or ordinance may come forth in the next few months with some recommended changes about allowable times for food trucks.
Okay.
Awesome.
We have a motion, we have a second. Unless there's any further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor unanimous. Councilor Cop had his hand up before I asked the question, so.
Mr. Chairman, on the next three items, I'm, whenever you are ready.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, item 24-055, 056, 057. I move to set a public hearing date of June 3 to consider and act authoring, authorizing the town manager to enter into a labor contract agreement with the Cumberland Police Benevolent Association for the period of July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2027. Also to enter into agreement with the Public Service Associate, Employees Association, as well as the Cumberland Fire Department Teamsters Local 340 for the same periods of time.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Again, this is just to set those public hearing dates for June 3, for all three of those organizations, and for the town manager to enter into labor contract agreements with those three different organizations. So unless there's any further discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor unanimous.
Just late.
Okay. That concludes, I believe, legislation and policy. We will now move to new business. Councilor Cop, I will start at my left.
I'm digging out my $20 that I donate to the 4H Food Party, as I do every meeting. And I also would like to congratulate Julia Gaggen. I'm her biggest fan. In my mind, she should still be, she should be in the top three, but obviously she's not. Town of Cumberland should be very proud. She did an awesome job and really spoke well. And kudos to her for representing Cumberland. I mean, she did an excellent job, and that's all I have.
She's got one hell of a voice, Ronnie.
She's phenomenal.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. And Tig, thanks for the new car.
You're welcome. Anytime.
Councilor Vale?
I was out with the dogs Sunday and had a chance to go through the new orchard. My kudos to the Lands and Conservation Forestry Subcommittee.
Jesse.
Yep, great job. Very, very, it was a good turnout Saturday.
Sunday.
Sunday, Sunday. Yep, and then last Sunday, I got a chance, this past Sunday, walked through it. It really is, it's going to be quite an asset once it grows out.
Great, thank you.
I echo Bob. I went out, planted trees for my kids with the Orchard Subcommittee, met a lot of people. There were folks there, of course, from Cumberland, but also from North, North Yarmouth, also from Falmouth, who were there, and I think it's really cool that they're paying attention to some of the awesome initiatives that are being spearheaded by this group. Big congratulations to Jesse and all the folks on the Orchard Subcommittee, and I hope the deer don't eat all of the trees.
Yeah. Thank you. Councilor Douglas?
No new business.
Council Reed?
I had a couple of things, but Ronnie took one of them. This, last week, we had the candidate night, and really a very impressive group of seven people. I will tell the people of Cumberland, you'll be well-served by all, any of them, so I was very impressed with everything, and it was, it was good to see the different views and the different candidates from the three different districts, so. And I want to congratulate Dick Budd, who was chosen as Lions Business of the Year. Budd's golf staple in this town, and it's a well-deserved award. He's a hell of a good guy. And finally, I was asked to let people know that the Cumberland Historical Society's Town Scavenger Hunt is Friday night, so don't fret if you see a bunch of people running around town looking for things in strange places. They've actually got a reason to do so. That's all I have.
I would argue that everybody looking for strange things in strange places probably has their own reason for something, but this one should not be feared. That's great. Councilor Story King?
Yes, a couple of things. Councilor Vale mentioned his neighbor who wants to start a restore, but I'd like to remind or inform the public that on Facebook, there's a buy-nothing page that you could, if you have stuff you're looking to get rid of, you can put it on buy-nothing. I've seen everything from cribs to dog crates go on and disappear quickly. The library expansion committee meeting met on Monday, last Monday, we could go today. And one of the things I've learned in my short six months I've been on this committee or whatever is that donors like to know that municipalities support potential fundraising projects, and that came up, I was mindful of that when we made the donation to the Chabig and Cumberland Land Trust, that just that donation as part of the fundraising will encourage other donors to donate. And the town of Cumberland has already made moves in that direction. We've already spent roughly $50,000 in planning for library expansion and more if you count moving the historical society and all of those kind of things. So when people say, what's the town of Cumberland putting, putting up, we've already started, and don't forget that those things have been paid for already. The library, the library hosted a volunteer gathering last week, last Thursday, Wednesday, Wednesday, very well attended, and our library is more than a library. I was thinking on the way there, I've been reading, listening to a historical novel, and everything happened at the tavern, like even Court Met at the taverns, the, you know, Kennebec Tavern or whatever. I was thinking, well, libraries have kind of become our meeting spaces. Our library works with conservation groups, they work with children, they work with, they work with everybody. And for, to respond to Kevin who brought up, Belvin who brought up, why aren't we regionalizing library? We already have regionalized libraries called Minerva, so you can go to the library and get just about anything you want. This week's agenda, our town council packet, Brenda, I'm going to blame you just because you're sitting there, 216 pages. Are we trying to scare town councilors away?
Yes.
Have we had anyone withdraws since seeing that the town council packet is 216 pages? And finally, a reminder that voting for the June 11 election is now available because it's less than a month to go, so.
300 absentee ballots already out.
300?
Wow.
Wow.
All right.
So that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good reminders. I would also remind folks that the, the school board candidates, so not the town council, but the folks running for the MSAD Board of Directors positions are, is May 15, so this Wednesday at 6 o'clock here in Town Hall. And then also to mark your calendars for the Memorial Day Parade that happens here in Cumberland here at the end of this month. So that is all I have in terms of new business. I think at this point, we need to adjourn the meeting and then, no, move into executive session and then come back and adjourn. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Title I, MRSA 4056C, reference real property.
Do we have a second?
Second, give it to Bob.
I'll give it to Tig, she was first. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor unanimous. We are now in executive session.